This is Rick Hackett staff. We are recording. He may begin.
All right. This is this is the July 21st, 2021 meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission will now come to order. Due to COVID-19 concerns, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting has been posted on the planning commission webpage at www.boco.org/pc. There will be an opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the dockets listed on the agenda during the respective virtual public hearing portions for each item. I'll provide instructions about that when we get to each docket on the agenda. So we'll start with roll call. Mark Bloomfield here. Sam Fitch.
Here.
And Gold Barb. And we're she's still she's still in the chair. We'll come back to her. I know Sam Libby is out Gavin McMillan. Dan Hilton. No Dan.
It's actually, this is Anna Motor Staff.
Oh, it's David.
That's correct.
Sorry, David.
I'm here.
Okay, Todd Goodley.
Here.
Melanie Uneski.
Here.
And Leishan Gargano.
Here.
Okay, and I guess we'll wait for Anne to come back. I'll go ahead with the rest of the intro here. Just a reminder, planning commissioners, please identify yourself before speaking and speak slowly and clearly. All votes will be roll call votes. Please keep your video on when possible during the hearing. Please remain on mute until you're ready to speak. When you begin speaking, please identify yourself as planning commissioner, such as this is planning commissioner Mark Bloomfield. It may help to keep your participant list open in Zoom so you can see who's speaking as the person who's speaking will be bolded. So the first item is minutes. So are there any corrections to the minutes from our June meeting? Is there a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
This is Commissioner McMillan. I move that we approve the minutes from the June 16th, 2021 meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. We'll do roll call. Mark Bloomfield, I Sam Fitch.
Hi.
And Gold Barb.
Hi.
And Gold Barb.
Hi.
Gavin McMillan.
Hi.
David Sue.
Hi.
Todd Quigley.
Hi.
Melanie Uneski.
Hi.
And Leishan Gargano.
Hi.
Okay, that is unanimous. So we'll move on to staff update updates. Are there any staff updates?
There are no staff updates today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have three gen items scheduled today's planning commission meeting. At this time, I'll take the opportunity to explain the public hearing process. There will be opportunity to provide public comment remotely on the subject items for which we have specified. We will take public testimony during the public hearing portions for each item. The order of presentation will be to hear from staff first, next to the applicant, and then we'll move to accepting public comment from any individuals who wish to speak. Some people may have signed up in advance and we will call on you first. If you did not sign up for a public comment, you may sign up in the chat. Please direct your comments to the commission. The chair will direct any questions that arise during the hearing to the appropriate party. Once we have heard all testimony, the public hearing will be closed. The planning commission will then discuss the application and vote to take an action. Okay. All members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the PC homepage beforehand. Once those who signed up in advance have spoken, I will call for any additional members of the public to speak. If you join by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address, and the docket number in the chat box to the right. As each person who is joined by computer and signed up to speak is unmuted, Zoom will adjust your participant status so that you can speak and be seen via video. Once you are finished speaking, Zoom will place you back in the room as an attendee. If you dialed in to the meeting by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine and we will unmute you when you when we call on you to provide comment. When it is your turn, the system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you're unmuted either via computer or phone, if you have called in, please state your name and address for the record before providing comment. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. A timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. Time can be pulled at three minutes per person for a maximum of 10 minutes. You will need to provide the names and addresses of the other people up to three besides yourself who are in attendance and donating their time to you. Anyone who's pulling time will need to attend the virtual hearing so we can verify their presence as we would in an in-person hearing. Please do not submit comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. The chat box is for speaker sign in only. Please remain on mute when possible. The moderators will mute you if we see that your connection is the source of background noise. Members of the public will be unable to share their screens during public comment. Applicants, please have your presentation pulled up and ready to go. I will announce when we are ready for you to present and at that time you can share your screen. Okay. So. Oh, you know what? I apologize. I don't have the actual agenda open. Hold that. Okay. So the first item on the agenda is docket V dash two one dash zero 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 one, the Harts Hall vacation. That was tabled from June 16th, 2021. And let's see, the staff is Nathaniel Shaw. So if you want to take it away, Nathaniel.
I certainly will, Chairman. Thank you. Let me share my screen with you guys. If you would not mind letting me know, you can see the screen.
We can.
Okay, wonderful. All right. Well, thank you very much, Planning Commission. My name is Nathaniel Scholl. I am planner two with the Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting Department's Development Review Team. And this afternoon I will be presenting docket V 21 0001 Hartzell Vacation. This is being revisited from a planning commission hearing in June in which the item was tabled. So quickly to just show you this vicinity map here to remind you where the property is. It is located on the west side of the town site of Eldora on the western edge or the western side of Eldora Avenue. This here, what you're seeing on the screen is the original submission from the applicant, which is showing the vacated map request. So the specific portions of the map in which the applicant is requesting the right of ways to be vacated here are shown in orange. I will just remind you that that includes the full width of the alley between lots one through six and lots 42 through 48 of block 51, which are shown there in green and the entire triangular portion of the old 11th Avenue right of way, which is recorded under reception number 90916881 with the county. There is, as you can see here on the map, an existing cabin which encroaches into the alley by approximately eight feet and the request is intended to, or the crest for vacating the right of way is to remedy such encroachment so that it no longer is encroaching. The private, I'm sorry, there is also visible on this map, a private access or driveway shown on that triangular portion of Old 11th. The applicant is seeking the vacation in order to assure that such access as shown is kept clear to the cabin that is on the property. In other words, to prevent the visiting public from either parking or blocking the access to her property. So since the previous planning commission hearing, staff has reconvened and attempted to answer some of the confusing or confounding questions and circumstances from the last hearing. What staff has done is provided for planning commission several options in terms of the way they will decide on how to vote for this vacation request. On the screen here is option one in illustrative form. What I'm showing you is the ability for planning commission, I really should start with staff recommending to planning commission to vacate the entire alley between lots one through six and lots 42 to 48, which is shown in the green between the block 50 51. The southern half of the alley abutting lot 42, which is pointed with an arrow to the south and the northwest half of the triangular portion of Old 11th, which is pointed, which is shown as an arrow pointing to the left. In the second option, the planning commission, staff is recommending that planning commission may determine to vacate the the same areas in which option one suggested, but also include the vacation of the northern half of the alley abutting, abutting lot seven, which is shown in blue by the arrow pointing north to the Elwood Henry Vincent Family Trust and the southeastern half of the triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue, which is shown with the yellow arrow pointing down to Ms. Donna Burbank. At the previous planning commission hearing, staff had heard and received seven additional public comments on this matter. Those comments were both in support and in opposition towards the vacation request. And they are summarized here on the screen. In general, support includes being good stewards of land, needing to protect the historic cabin and the family ties that exist on the land. Those comments in opposition included, among others, removing the public, potentially removing public access to Middle Boulder Creek. The right to be vested portions are part of the triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue right of way, as well as concerns for how the applicant would be using the vacated land to potentially keep people out once it is vacated in terms of their methods for that. So I wanted to kind of provide a framework for you all in terms of how the recommendations are laid out. So in using option one, which is the map below or the diagram below, staff here would suggest for a planning commission to vacate the following areas to the applicant in this first option. And I did describe those to you previously. They are shown here below on the left. In the case for option two, the planning commission can choose to vacate the following areas to the applicant and the abutting property owners. And again, that was described as option two, which we went through previously. The staff has also created, I would call an option two A or two B in the case that option two is chosen to vacate the following areas to the applicant and the abutting property owners. The option exists or the really the framework for those recommendations lay under whether the planning commission feels it is necessary to do that subject to an easement, that is an access easement for the applicant to allow them to use a portion of the driveway or the existing access over the then vacated portion to their abutting property owners to the south or do so, that is vote to vacate those portions to the applicant and abutting property owners without an easement and thereby the applicant would be required to relocate a portion of that driveway to provide enough space for access to their property. And staff also will suggest or state here that the analysis in its entirety and overall through, through which staff prepared its staff recommendation and report will remain, but there are certain things staff wishes to clarify to planning commission in terms of their confusion from the previous hearing. So directly looking at the criterion under 10-101E, which states the board shall not approve a vacation without, within the Eldora Townsite if one and two are actually the same, those will remain the same from the previous recommendations. Three is where staff would like to make some clarification. This is regarding the rights of way that I've been identified as facilitating access to Middle Boulder Creek. I'd like to move to the next slide to show you a graphic of a map which staff's prepared. As you can see here, the, the map is showing there to be a portion of right of way to the south of those identified private parcels, which is shown here and pointed to in the red arrow as old undeveloped El Dorado Avenue, which leads to the access to Middle Boulder Creek, south of the parcel. On the, on Middle Boulder Creek, there exists a public access bridge known as the Keshong Bridge, which is to remain in public access for the public. And specifically, this parcel and right of way in discussion for vacation are not contemplated as part of, I'm so sorry. I meant to say that this parcel and right of way shown on the map in white and bounded in black are not contemplated as part of the vacation request. And I mentioned the private access bridge, which exists to allow folks to access that area. I also want to point out on a separate slide that the county has identified specific platted roads, alleys and rights of way in Eldora as illustrated here on the map, which identify specific parcels to be retained and those to be and those that have no specific action towards them. The ones to be retained are shown in yellow and the ones that have no specific emphasis are shown in red or maroon. In question, neither the alley being requested for vacation nor the triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue requested for vacation are identified as needing to be retained as shown in yellow here on the map. Also, or furthermore, the undeveloped Avenue, El Dorado Avenue right of way, which was shown to you in the map before, is identified as one of the Boulder County properties to be retained. As you can see here as the zoomed in parcel, that portion shown in yellow within the circle and that below in the alley is shown in yellow. So those are to be retained for public access. And once again, those will remain in the public domain. So at this point, staff is community planning and permitting staff recommends that the planning commission will recommend to Board of County Commissioners a conditional approval of docket V 21 dash zero 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 one, the Hartzell Vacation. Under the framework that was laid out by staff, that being option one to vacate only to the applicant or option two to vacate to the applicant and abutting property owners under those two conditions of either requiring a, an easement for the continued use of the driveway or without an easement. So the conditions here are laid out. I, staff would like to interrupt, to suggest or to state additional information. And I do apologize, this, this was not included at the time of the application, but was noted as staff was reading through the report. As shown here in red, staff would like to just clarify that there is a revision to this condition, which applies to all three scenarios. And the, the crux of this condition, really it stated previously that 45 days was the amount of time to require an applicant to complete its post approval requirements. And here we are suggesting that it is within one year's time. So I wanted to make that very clear. And lastly, one other specific condition that wants, I'd like to amend under the recommendation for approval of vacation for the entire 12 foot alley and triangular portions, which would be subject to the easement, the access easement. Number five has changed. In this case, Boulder County will establish, will establish an easement in the southeastern half of the triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue right of way to allow for the continued use of the driveway. This has changed from the language that stated the easement must be granted by the abutting property. So I wanted to make those two clarifications. And at this time, staff is happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Nathaniel. I'm glad to see that one year change. That was something that I had a question about. I do have a question about the easement real quick. I always thought that an easement was between the two private parties and you're saying that Boulder County will establish easement?
That is the suggestion I received from recent internal discussions with staff. So I would probably defer to the staff to explain that. Upper, upper staff. And that has been the language that has been suggested. So I do understand your position that typically wasn't a requirement that easements are traded between private property owners, but it seems like Miss Frederick is available to answer that question.
Yes.
Hi, Commissioner Summer Frederick with Community Planning and Permitting Staff. Because the county owns the right of way right now and all associated rights with that area, the county can vacate as many of those rights as it wishes. So if the, if the commission chooses to approve this vacation or recommend approval of this vacation with the establishment of the easement, essentially what the, what will be happening is the county will be vacating all rights except for that easement that allows for the existing driveway to remain in its place.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Does anybody else have questions for Nathaniel?
I have a few questions. So with the drawing on the triangular portion and the driveway, I just want to clarify that that is still approximate. You know, there's some chance the entire driveway is on one side and some chance it's not. Is that right?
That, that is accurate, Commissioner. And the specific language in our conditions would suggest that a survey, a land survey prepared by a professional land surveyor verify the correctness of the distribution or division of that right of way. So that's kind of what the hook is for the need for the applicant to, since, since that map is not 100% accurate.
Okay. And I forgot to introduce myself. This is David Chu, planning commissioner. Another question regarding 10 101 E2, this is the public need consideration. There's been some, you know, language about reserving the view shed. How does the view shed, how does the staff view the view shed in terms of need? Is it a need or is it not a need or is the reservation to address that need? I hope that's clear, but I can clarify if you want.
Now, that is a great question, Commissioner. And I don't know if it was directly or very specifically addressed in this latest revision to the, to the recommendation. So as pointed out by our natural resource planner, who's part of the Parks and Open Space Department, that is by designation, a view shed corridor or an important view corridor for the protection of those, for those views. And I did, I did receive information subsequently to kind of clarify that point with him. You know, the, the preservation of those, the view includes the, the existing biodiversity in the area. So those aspen trees and some other sort of natural features that are important to the view shed towards that, towards the west. And the intent, I think staff was putting in the conditions to prohibit any development within those as, with the exception of the need for providing access, because that is a requirement is to have physical access to property. So the intent there for, from staff's perspective is that condition effect creates a circumstance in which it will preserve those features. Since they are not allowed to develop, the intent really is to prevent development on those feet, on the, on the rights of way that are vacated. Does that answer your question? I don't think there was so much emphasis, more emphasis. And I'm sorry, Dave, I did ask you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Commissioner Chu again. So I think I understand that. I guess just to be technical about it, you know, the, the language of the statute says, you know, whether or not there's a current or foreseeable public need. And I want to understand if the view shed and biodiversity is considered a need or not.
That, that's very clear and I appreciate the clarity on that. It is considered, so when you weigh those considerations, we are looking at predominantly the public need typically refers to is a road to be built on this area. Now that's sort of the default, right, is, is most typical. I think staff looked at this and suggested with the public works comments suggesting they really neither have a need currently to build a road or, or contain, maintain a road on that section. That, that seems to have weighed more heavily in terms of, you know, the emphasis on the preservation of the area of those, of that specific right of way. To me, that condition or that, that comment was what really gave the emphasis to staff suggesting that it is okay to vacate and subsequently condition no development, even though it is still an important feature to preserve that area for the view sheds. So again, they put more weight on the fact that it is not needed, but they did consider the fact that yes, preservation of view sheds is important. So we would want to condition no development.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Anybody else have questions for Nathaniel? I do have one question regarding the right of way that's to be maintained to, for access to the creek. That was the part that is in yellow on, on your map there. Is that something that's explicit, that explicitly allows public access currently? Or I mean, is it, is there like a trail there or something that gives access to that bridge or is it just something that's sort of understood by the neighbors?
Maybe I can clarify even further. Are you suggesting that the question being is, is there really like an access easement to allow them to use that area or is it just kind of a social trail that they?
Right.
Right. Okay. I do not know. I don't have the answer to whether there is a exact, you know, access easement. The fact that it is public right of way, I think by default gives access to the public to use. So they don't even need to explicitly include and, you know, information on that.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of what my question was.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff before we go on to the applicant presentation? Is the applicant here for presentation?
This is Anna Motor Staff. Stephanie Hartzell is present and I'm promoting her to panelist.
Right.
Ms. Hartzell, this is Anna Milner Staff. You should be able to speak whenever you're ready.
Hello, I'm here. I, I know you can't see me right at the moment. I don't know if I need to be on video at the end of what I do have to present. I have a couple of slides on a PowerPoint that I just want to point out a couple of things. So I'll go ahead and get started. This is Stephanie Hartzell. I am one of the property owners along with my brother, Paul Hartzell at 1104 El Dorado Avenue in Eldora, Colorado. I do live in Denver and my brother does live on up by Grand Junction. So hopefully that takes care of that portion of it. I do want to start off this, there are lots of changes that have been presented here today that I was not privileged to. However, when I was talking with Mr. Shaw, we did discuss things before he did say that there were going to be changes presented today. But yet we did not have a chance to review all of those before. So some of the stuff I will note that has already been clarified just recently. So that might change some of the things that I have to say. But first I do want to start off with letting you know that there actually is a vacated access to Middle Boulder Creek, which was conditioned in the Cole Hagan and the Ken Dig vacation several years ago. That is That is stated and is to remain public access to Middle Boulder Creek. There is, a matter of fact, I can actually show you now. I'll go to the PowerPoint real quick here. There is, this is the access on Old Eldorado Avenue. There's a trail that leads here past this area that goes down to the Keyshong Bridge. And then this.
If I can interrupt you, Ms. Hartzell, I'm not actually able to see your screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have to open the video?
There should be a share screen icon in the middle of the bottom of the screen. Okay, that looks like it's starting. Okay, now.
Is that better? Okay, thank you. So this particular slide is showing on Old Eldorado Avenue. This was just taken last weekend. This is the path that is, was vacated or kept as Boulder County property during the Cole Hagan and the Ken Dig vacation to remain as public access to Middle Boulder Creek from the current Eldorado Avenue using the old Eldorado Avenue area. And then there is, the, the other one will come in later. So I just wanted to answer that for you, Mr. Bloomfield. You had just had that question. And so I hope that satisfies that for you there. Also, so there, there are several places on the application or on the recommendations that the division of the triangular portion of the right of way of Old 11th Avenue should indeed read the southwestern corner and not the southeastern corner. I have not seen all of the changes as of this morning. But while it was changed in one place that I am aware of, there are several more places that it would need to be changed to make sure that there's no confusion, because if the starting point is at the southeast corner, then it would indeed cut off our full access. On page 12, 13, and 14, this is where this appears and would need to be changed to make sure that it is the southwest corner. On page three of what I had, the vacation request. So there's places that say that applicant requests and that she or her, and I just want to make sure that indeed that, that it is known that this is my brother and I, it is the Hartzell family. And I don't want it to be misconstrued that I am the only applicant, because my brother is also signed on with this as well. He just does not have time to be here today. So I am requesting that throughout, because there are multiple pages on paid, between pages number four, all the way to number 10, and then 12, 13, and 14, where there are multiple places that these would need to be changed to reflect that it is the Hartzells that are asking for this and not just myself. And then I don't want to point out every location, so that's kind of just in general. There is some clarification. Mr. Scholl stated in his email on July 11th, 2021 to me. And then Mr. Scholl, you do say to the Hartzell family below are the staff recommendations for the revised staff report to planning commission. This is under the heading Commissioners Conditionally Approved, docket B 21001. Hartzell vacation with the following conditions. Number three states about the land survey being stamped by their professional Colorado license survey. And then it also stated that Ms. Ms. Hartzell and Ms. Burbank shall equally share the cost of obtaining survey. However, the final recommendation has been updated and now it reads on page 12, number four, that the applicant shall obtain a land survey stamped by the professional Colorado land surveyor to affirm that the division of the triangle portion of Old 11th Avenue right of way results in the applicant receiving the portion to which the land is nearest proximity. And so I believe that what you were just talking about and the changes that were made there hope to answer that clarification, because, which is if the applicant is to apply, then our Ms. Burbank and Mr. Elwood also to comply with being able to have a portion of, of that. Let's see here, for paying for half of the new survey of the vacated areas. And I'm not sure why they're not listed, but if the properties are to be divided, as previously stated, then the Hartzell family would be more than happy to pay for their portion of a new survey and a new deed. But we don't feel that we should be responsible for the abutting neighbors obtaining a survey of their own and a need a new deed for their property. So I just wanted some clarification to make sure that, that they were taking care of their portion as that would be their property to take care of. And then Mr. Scholl's response, since the application fee was already paid when the initial application was submitted, it is now up to the private parties involved to determine how costs associated with the applicant in any post approval work are paid. So just again, some clarification, is this something that, that we take care of our part, they take care of their part? Or is this a collaboration between all three property owners? And then on page six, that, number three, if the planning commission recommends that the southeastern half of the triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue be vacated to Donna Burbank, community planning and permitting staff also request that the planning commission determine whether to recommend that the board of county commissioners vacate the southern half of the triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue to Donna Burbank, subject to the, to an easement for the applicant's continued use of the existing driveway. Or B, vacate the southeastern half of the triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue to Donna Burbank without an easement, with the understanding that the applicant will no longer have full access to the existing driveway and will instead need to relocate at least part of the driveway. So the Hartzell family asked Mr. Scholl for clarification on this matter. He, and asking, is it up to Ms. Burbank if she wants to grant us an easement? Or is it something that the commissioners decide? And we wanted to know what really happened, is going to be happening with moving the driveway if needed. And Mr. Scholl's response was that the staff will be updating its recommendation to the planning commission per county attorney's advice to read. As part of this vacation, Boulder County will establish an easement in the southeastern half of the triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue right of way to allow for the continued use of the existing driveway that accesses the parcel at 1104 Eldorado Avenue. This automatically grants you an easement to use that portion of your driveway on Ms. Burbank's vacated half, instead of obligating you to obtain an easement from her. I did not see that verbiage added in, in the recent commentary from Mr. Scholl. So this would need to be changed. And then also there is on page 11, number two, under the heading of the facilities, new development that has a negative impact on historic archaeological, cultural site scenic or environmental resources such as wetlands, riparian areas, and plant or wildlife habitat. States, as noted above, staff recommends a condition prohibiting any new development within the vacated triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue right of way, with the exception of any infrastructure required for the maintenance and upkeep of the existing driveway, the relocation of the driveway, as well as improvements for necessary relocation of the existing driveway in the event that the southeastern half of the triangular portion of Old 11th Avenue is vacated without an easement. And again, the county attorney's suggestion there that was just recently stated, I believe, should be put in there too as well so that there is no confusion. And then going back to page 12, under the heading, recommended conditions of approval for vacation to only the applicant. And that's where that 45 days came in and Mr. Scholl did rectify that by saying that that 45 days is incorrect and the correct timeframe to complete the conditions of approval is one year. That that was his mistake and that he did make those changes. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Scholl. And so then also page 13, under the heading of recommendation, conditions of approval for vacation of the entire 12-foot alley, as well as the triangular portion of the right of way within Old 11th Avenue subject to an easement for the applicant's continued use of the extent, existing driveway. Shouldn't the county attorney's statement also go there too as well? Just for better clarification. And the Hartzell family does understand that there was a new portion added saying that Boulder County multimodal transportation standards when it comes to the possibility of moving the driveway to the north. And so we do understand what those requirements are. However, at the time when this is determined, that there may be more questions to be, to be determined then. All of these issues truly could be completely avoided if the Boulder County commissioners see fit to vacate the entirety of the 12-foot alleyway located between lots one through seven and lots 42 through 48 and block 51, and all of the triangular portion of the right of way of Old 11th Avenue to the Hartzell family. Arguing the fact that Ms. Burbank and Mr. Elwood have full access. I'm going to go to my next slide. This is going from Old Eldorado Avenue, the path leading directly to the Burbank's property there. And then also on the other side, I am standing on the corner of lot 42 and lot seven, that what you see here is the Elwoods property on this side. And I'm actually standing on my tiny little spot here. And the next one over this picture here, I'm not sure how to move that over so you can all see that. But I'm pointing to the other corner which lays here. So that is all the Elwoods access on their side as well. And so we are, the Hartzell family is still asking for the full vacation to be vested to the Hartzell family. And that the Hartzell family does believe at this time that another continuation of this hearing will need to take place so that all of these issues can be addressed in full and the appropriate changes can be made. And we are requesting an additional planner to review all of Mr. Scholl's changes to ensure they are correct before it is submitted to the commissioners for final approval. And we are also requesting that the commissioners, please take your time to read all pages of the recommendations to ensure all changes have been made properly. So at the next hearing, we are not wasting anybody's time by having to go over all of this again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartzell. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Sure, I'd like to see.
Rick, can we end the screen sharing?
I'm not sure how to end the screen sharing.
There should be a screen share icon in the middle of the bottom of your screen. That allows you to stop screen sharing. Does Stephanie have any response to the application, applicant's presentation?
Sure, Chairman. Thanks. First of all, there, a few of those corrections were accurate in that the southwest, again, it said southeast corner should be stated as southwest in the conditions. I should have mentioned that. I apologize that I've forgotten.
Is that to say that they, they've been updated in your documents?
Let me affirm that. Sorry, give me a second. I think the intent here was that I posted it and I wanted to address that that needs to be amended in the final recommendation to you. So the actual language is not included there for the update. A few of those comments that the applicant stated, I believe we just went over. That being the access easement situation I brought up to you is now added as condition five in that option in which they would be granted an easement. So I already addressed that. A few of those earlier discussion or points that she, that the applicant had brought up specifically about the language that she received in an email and then I had replied to. I believe all of those were in draft form recommendations. And what she has now received is just what everyone's received, which is the final recommendation. So I just want to make clear that a lot of this was draft discussion. And what you have in front of you, with the exception of a few things I've already brought up, is the final recommendation. And that's really it.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Doesn't sound like it. Any, any further questions for staff before we go to public comment?
Actually, one question for staff. This is Commissioner Chu. Just so I understand vacations between adjacent properties, even if we wanted to, we could not vacate the entire triangular portion to the Hartzell family. And we could not, with the alleyway between Elwood and Hartzell, we, we cannot allocate that, vacate that completely to the Hartzells as well, right?
I don't believe that's correct. I do think you have the ability to vacate as much of the right of way that you wish to a specific applicant and, or a person. And I think the attorneys are here to answer that question.
Yes. Sorry, this is Conrad Lattes in the county attorney's office. And I would agree with Commissioner Chu's statement that, that's the the vacation statute is very clear that if the entire width is vacated, it must be split between the adjoining property.
Thank you for the clarity.
Okay. Here, if there are other questions, we'll go to public comment. Anna, it looks to me like we have two speakers signed up, at least according to the Google Doc.
That's correct. Donna Burbank, you're first, followed by John Hundeman. And I believe they're both speaking within Donna's account or sign on. So.
Okay, and I need to reread the public, public comment section, right? Okay, so all members, this is just the rules for the public comment. All members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the planning commission homepage beforehand. Once those who've signed up in advance have spoken, I will call for any additional members of the public to speak. If you joined by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address, and the docket number in the chat box to the right. As each person who has joined by computer and signed up to speak is unmuted, Zoom will adjust your participant status so that you can speak and be seen via video. Once you are finished speaking, Zoom will place you back in the room as an attendee. If you dialed into the meeting via phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine and we will unmute you when we calling you to provide comment. When it is your turn, the system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you are unmuted, either via computer or phone, if you have called in, please state your name and address for the record before providing comment. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. A timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. As mentioned, up to three applicants can pull their time for a maximum of 10 minutes. You'll need to provide the names and the addresses of the other three people. Oh, excuse me, it's three other people. So that's four people total. So you'll need to provide the names and addresses of the other people who are in attendance and donate their time. Anyone who's pulling time will need to be, to attend the virtual meet hearing so that we can verify their presence as we would in person hearing. Let's see, I think the rest of this is, members of the public will be unable to share their screens during public comment. That was the other important thing. So. that all having been said, Donna, if you're muted, please unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I just before I start, I wanted to combine my time with John Hundeman. Do we do that now or do we do that after?
Is John with you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm Donna Burbank, ten ninety Klondike Avenue in Eldora. And I wanted to start with, I had a similar confusion as Ms. Hartzell. My understanding from the last meeting was that the standard per, or I guess it's article one hundred best ten or something is that when you of the land use code is that when a property is vacated, it's divided amongst the adjacent property owners. And that was my understanding. In fact, I even got the little card in the mail saying that I was Donna Burbank as an applicant. And then during the process, I guess I wasn't, I was trying to meet with Mr. Shaw and I guess we missed a deadline. I had some questions. But it was my understanding that I would be a co-applicant in this process. So it's a little bit of a frustration for me is that I feel like I I don't have an equal voice. And then it was sort of implied that I don't really need one because the rule is just that when something is vacated, it's divided down the middle. So I I would agree with Ms. Hartzell. It seems a little confusing that on one hand I got the card from the county saying I'm an applicant and now I'm not. So if it makes sense, as Ms. Hartzell mentioned, that we need to postpone this yet again. I know we're all busy and really just work this out. It seems to me the most logical thing is that we we take that, I guess we've been calling it the triangle, for lack of a better word, the the portion that that accesses both of our properties and just get together on that piece. I think it makes sense. And in my proposal that I mentioned, either, you know, keep it open for everybody or divide it down the middle. And I think we would equally split it down both sides. As Ms. Hartzell mentioned, I have no problem paying my half for a survey or whatever fee you need to do. That's not an issue for me. But I guess the issue I have is that if we divide it down the center, there's no reason for these sort of, I guess I would say it's option two with no easement. And my reasoning is for option one, it does seem odd that you would do an even of an area, vacation of an area, give it to only one property owner and leave the other open. I think what the county had said last time, there was no reason for them to use it, no public need. And so it just seems odd that that would be sort of a half vacation that seems against precedent. So for me, option one didn't seem ideal. Option two, which was just splitting down the middle, seems the most reasonable to me. I do understand that the hard cells, I mean, just to clarify, just as I have access to my property via a public right-of-way near the Kenosa Bridge, they also have public access to their property. And if we're going to use that as a criteria, we both have access. I mean, the parcels have access today. They just don't have private access that they can put a gate in front of. So I understand that. But if we just, if we can compare apples to apples, but even if we want to give the Hartzells access privately to their property, which I understand, I think it can still be done just by dividing it in half. So if you look at this land survey that was sent, the hypotenuse of that triangle is seventy-six point six five feet, dividing that half is thirty-eight point three feet. That's longer than any driveway I've ever owned. And that's plenty of room for, that's more than two cars wide. I have a little bit of an issue calling that area a driveway. Yes, the Hartzells have parked there. I've parked there. I live here. I walk there regularly. There is some disturbed earth. I welcome the Commissioners to come up. If you look at it, it's some dirt, a pathway, right? So I walk there every day to put my compost in the compost pile. And so if I would like to be very clear on the legal description of a driveway, yes, there's some sand. I mean, but I've been walking there too. But even if we use the legal definition of what you could maybe see was the driveway, I think even that, if we use that thirty-eight point three two feet is, we went there this morning and measured it. It's really on the edge of whatever we're calling sand. I think there's plenty of room for the Hartzells to get their half. They can put up a gate. They can park their car. But then I also need unimpeded access to my land. I do, that seems to me that that is being forgotten. I access that land. I might want to park a car to get to my own land. I I walk there every day to get to my land. That's where I take my morning walk. And it would decrease the value of my land. I purchased that. The 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 Hartzells also have had an opportunity to buy that land and they declined. So I I just think the most logical one is the one that seems to be the precedent in the county of divide it down the middle. The Hartzells get the thirty-eight feet to the, I agree. Also, there was a typo, the north. No, I'm sorry. There I'm doing it. The the west half, the part closest to the Hartzells' house. That thirty-eight feet goes to them. The other thirty-eight feet goes to me. We can split the cost of another survey or another deed or whatever. And to me, that just seems the easiest. But but doing anything else with the partial vacations or partial easements and all of that just seems unnecessary when there's plenty of room on the 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 hard cell side of that triangle. So that's my request. And I guess my other request is I would like to be an co-applicant. And that was, that was my understanding that would happen. So I can have an equal voice. I could have shown some pictures here too. I feel like I didn't have a voice in that. And there was some confusion. Literally, I can mail this card to you where it says Donna Burbank is an applicant. And and it was my, I know Nathaniel is really hard. He's probably in meetings like this all day. But I had said, can we just talk before I sign something? I need to understand what that was. And apparently missed a deadline. And I'm not clear what happened, but I do want to be an applicant and I'm happy to split down the middle and I'm happy to share costs. And I think we're overthinking this with a lot of, I know Eldora is confusing. And gosh, I have to go out there every day and kind of, you know, between all these different things. But I think the easiest thing is split it down the middle. We'll share our costs. Just make both completely private and both have access. And I think that's the easiest though. And I would like to be an applicant. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purping. Okay, do we have any other speakers for the public hearing? Anna, do we have anybody on the phone?
This is Anna. No, we do not. We do have a dial-in listener, but I believe they're here for another item.
So are we good with closing the whole of the hearing then?
Yes, there are no further members of the public signed up to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Does Steph have any comment on the public hearing portion?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, Steph has a few comments to this on this matter. So I would like to clarify as well, and this is another reminder, thank you that the the information that was provided in the recent posting to the newspaper was not accurate. I I was intending to meet the deadline for the posting. And all things considered, I was expecting to have the applicant's signatures. That being Ms. Burbank, who just spoke, as well as a gentleman named Bill Elwood, who's the one who owns Lot seven. After further discussion, Mr. Elwood is actually not even the owner himself. The the ownership of that, ownership of that parcel is in a trust. And the owner of, representative of that trust was not available to sign. So that was one thing that could not be done. So he could not join on as applicant. The latter, I will say a couple of things. I do understand Ms. Burbank's position. We did speak. It is true. We did not have the time or I didn't really provide the time to reconvene and answer questions. But from staff's understanding, when we spoke the last time, Ms. Burbank was very explicit about her disagreement with certain things. In particular, the way the recommendations were written regarding the rationale for vacating the alley. I I'm not quoting this, but I do recollect her saying this would remove her privately accessed public right of, sorry, privately accessed public right-of-way to the creek. Because at this point, she has direct access on via her property to the creek through the alley, which she thinks she'd be giving up if if it were vacated over to the Hartzells. To me, that kind of positioned it as, you know, if she had no intent to agree to that, I wasn't trying to persuade her to be an applicant. It was really up to her. It was my belief that she didn't want to be one. And I am sorry if that was now the case that I understand she does want to be one. So that is what my position is on that. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff based on public comment?
This is Commissioner Shu again. I do have a question for staff and possibly the attorney based on something that came in my mind during Ms. Burbank's comments. So if we were to pick option one, then does that mean in a later application, we would be splitting up the southeastern half of the triangle again? And then the northern part of the alleyway again, because the Hartzells then own adjacent properties which are closer to that. So there'd be no way that Burbank's or the Elwood community would get the, or whatever the owners of the, the trust owner would be able to get what we have designated an option two.
This is Conrad Lattes in the County Attorney's Office. And I, my reading of the vacation statutes is that what you have suggested is correct. That if if we do a partial vacation now, when the next time we come back, if both, if we wanted to do a full vacation of that remaining half width, it would have to be split between the two parties.
This is Commissioner Gargano. I'm just remembering past vacations we've done in Eldora where that, where that hasn't been the case, where we've just vacated half and then said when the other party wanted to vacate their half, they could. Or we waited until both were on the same, just from, just, I mean, I know not every property is the same, but that's my recollection from past vacations.
And I I can't comment on how things were done in the past. If you look at this, at the maps of this area, it certainly looks like Ms. Burbank has been, you know, her property received a full width vacation of the other portion of Eleventh Street that was vacated long ago. I don't know how that happened, but all I can do is read the statutes as they are currently drafted and look at the docket that is in front of us now. And upon these facts, my reading of the statute is that if you do a half vacation now, the next time they come in, we'd have to split, split it.
I have the background on that full vacation. It was a trade for the Eldorado Avenue that went through the property. And I have all the deeds on that. In fact, the first survey said that I owned all of that area of Eleventh Street. And there was some back and forth. So I've always understood that I owned the whole driveway. Recently, it came to me that that last portion was public, but I have all the paperwork for that. It was, there's a portion of Eldorado. And there was given an equal portion of Eldorado and trade for that portion of Eleventh Street. So that's why that was a full vacation. And I have all the deeds for that in the history. Thank you.
That that very well may be the explanation, but we just have to go off of what the facts are now. As it is now, Ms. Burbank owns the portion south of this triangle. And so the triangle would have to be split if it is a full width vacation.
Thank you.
Chairman, I just, I want to confirm, what is the procedure with the applicants and or public being able to speak in response to certain questions? Can I get that clarification?
Yeah, the public comment is closed. And so if finding commission has any further questions of either the applicant or the public, we'll go ahead and ask, but we do ask that you remain muted otherwise. Okay, so one question that I had for Nathaniel was that that brought up, was brought up by Ms. Burbank's comment is how, what is the definition of the driveway in terms of determination of any kind of easement that might be established based on the survey? In other words, if it is kind of unclear, is there some kind of measurement from the other side that could be established? Because, you know, I'm fairly familiar with dirt driveways where there's a little bit of parking pull-off and it's can often be unclear. So how would that work?
Chairman, I think the way I would answer that, and I will receive backup information if this is not entirely accurate. But we have multimodal transportation standards for physical access, which were required to be met for private driveways. I believe the width of a private driveway is required to be between twelve and sixteen feet wide. And I may be mistaken or need to be corrected on that. But all applicants, anyone who has a property must have legal access to that property. And it must meet the multimodal transportation standards for physical access to their property as I just described.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we go into discussion?
Hi, this is Miana James, Assistant County Attorney. I just wanted to remind you that the applicant should have the last chance to respond before you go into deliberations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I should also officially close public comment. I didn't really do that already. So we'll consider public comment closed. And we will give the applicant a chance to respond.
Can I ask a question before we go to the applicant? So in regard to the Burbank parcel, access to the Burbank parcel, where is that access coming off the street? Does it come up Eldorado Avenue? As far
Is this a question for staff or for the applicant?
Well.
For the Ms. Burbank.
Well, if you can answer the question, that would be helpful.
So it is my understanding that she can use a portion of the old Eldorado Avenue to the south to access her property that is to the north of that. But if she has a different access that I am not aware of, then she can speak to that.
So in looking at this diagram where we have the Hartzell parcels and then the Burbank parcel is to the right. So where are you saying her access point is then?
Sure. So let me, well, if I can share my screen for the folk, for the do that. Okay, so I think this is the map or the diagram you wanted or referencing here. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if you see, it's not shown on this because I kind of cut it off. But just below the yellow parcel is a fifty-foot right-of-way. It's old Eldorado Avenue. It is technically undeveloped from a road, like a physical roadway being put in there. But there is, my understanding is that, and I've, as I recall from my, doing my site visit, there is a sort of a small portion about halfway through which could, has access to for parking. It is a public right-of-way, so technically anybody can park on that. But I believe, I haven't confirmed with Ms. Burbank for that reason, but I know it'd be why I think she should speak to this. But she has the ability to park her car to access her property from that old Eldorado Avenue on the south of her, to the south of her.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hartzell, do you have any comment on the public hearing portion?
Um, yes, I do have a comment. I would like to go back to the screen share if that's okay. Reason for, oh, let me click share. My apologies. Thank you. So this is old Eldorado Avenue that is on the south side of Ms. Burbank's property. All of this is Ms. Burbank's property. The driveway that we're talking about is on the other side on the northern side of her property. I am actually standing in what is the old road. And if I were looking the other way, there's plenty of access to park there. And that was also part of the condition for that Cole Hagan and Kandig vacation. So the Kandigs had access to their property through this pathway. And then if you're, I'm standing here and right here in this next one is you can see the mule shed here. And then this is closer up. Ms. Burbank has this access into her property, the whole entire property. And she also has the entire side of old or of the current Eldorado Avenue, giving her full access on two-thirds of the property. And the driveway that we're talking about is on the other side of these aspen trees and is blocking. There's no longer a path there. Ms. Burbank has placed a composting bin twenty feet away from the back door of the Hartzell property that was put in no more than two months ago. away from the back door of the Hartzell property that was put in uh no more than two months ago. And um, is, is quite an irritant as we can't even have our back door open now um, due to that. Um, how, okay, I'm gonna stop the sharing there. Um, I also um wanted to comment about um, uh, Ms. Burbank not being on the um, the application um, that was confusing as well. And I believe that Mr. Scholl had um, straightened that up. Uh, we were told that that would be um changed as the Burbanks and the Elwoods declined to sign the um, application. Um, also, uh, I'm not sure why Ms. Burbank would not be able to access her composting bin from her already um, full access to her property on the other sides. The vacation of the, of the triangular portion of that uh would not impede her in any um, respect to be able to have access to that. Um, and I'm not sure where she uh gets her recommendation of uh measuring. I thought that was something that was to be left up to um whoever we uh have to come out to do the survey. And I don't believe that that should be taken into consideration. Um, as it is not um, a legal uh representation. Also, uh, Ms. Burbank was notified um in 2008 in an email, which I do have a copy of that email from Mr. Uh, Lattice, the uh attorney there. Um, that she indeed does not own that portion of the driveway. And that was reiterated to her again last year in July uh when her survey was finally done. And so I do not understand why she continues to believe that she owns that um triangular portion. And now uh it is stated that it is Boulder County property, yet she still is arguing the fact that she has paperwork proving otherwise. Um, so with that, the Hartzell family is still asking for the entirety of the vacation. Even though we do understand the uh state law stating that um, that the half of those portions are to go to the abutting neighbors. Uh, we do realize that, but we also feel that um, it is upon the commissioners to make that final decision on whether the full vacation or the partial vacation goes into effect.
Hey, thank you for your comments. So with that, uh, we will close unless anybody has any further questions for staff. We will close questions and move into discussion. Who wants to start?
I'll start. This is Anne Goldfarb. I, I, I think that this has gotten really complicated, but I think that the um, what staff provided us with at this meeting was very helpful in terms of what the statutes require. And um, it would be my position that we divide that triangular portion and vacate the portion between the Hartzell and the Elwood Trust property, giving half to each property owner. Um, based on what statute requires without any easements.
Uh, this is Commissioner Fitch. Uh, I would support Ann in commending staff for a lot clearer diagrams of exactly what parcels and what pieces of land we're dealing with here in each part of the recommendation for vacation. I support with second Anne's motion if she would make it uh to divide the properties by half uh as proposed in the current version of the staff conditions. I think it's probably important to uh have the notion of or include the easement. Uh, because otherwise it seems to me that, that, that says there's no, there's no compulsion for Burbank to uh allow any portion of the current driveway that she views as encroaching on uh her side of the triangle. So it seems to me saying that the existing driveway is an easement granted by the county would solve that problem. Uh, but I do agree that the principle should be that the vacation occurs according to the normal vacation standards, not just the preference of one party or the other. About how they would divide things or not divide things. I, I'm open to discussion on the question of that whether the easement from the county is necessary or desirable. Uh, but I, I think that's the only real question that I would have to uh continue debate on. I'm ready to, I'm ready to vote in favor of Anne suggesting for uh dividing the prop, the vacated properties as per the staff recommendations.
This is here, Gargano. Just to be clear, are you, Sam, you're referring to option two?
Yes, option two. And the question is then uh, do you do two A or two B uh with an easement? That's independent or in addition to the dividing the property. Uh, so it allows the Hartzells to keep the driveway where it is. Or do we just divide it into two halves and the Hartzells would probably have to move some of the driveway? But uh, they would own it. So they would have the easement.
This is Commissioner McMillan. May I have a quest, question for staff maybe about that? I, I think that the initial proposal was for the county to grant the easement if we did not grant the southern.
You lost your
You muted yourself. You
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I was delivered a soliloquy and nobody, nobody heard me.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Practice run.
Saying that, that the southern half would be, the easement would be granted by the county if they retained the right of way, but that if the property went to the Burbanks, then she would be the one required to give the easement for the driveway. That's my question for staff. I think that's an important point to clarify. I think Sam, what you're suggesting is that the county would give that easement, but I think the way the staff condition is written is that the property owner would grant the easement to the other property owner. Is that correct?
So um, if I understand you correctly, Commissioner, that uh the second option, we, I went through with you during this very uh presentation I gave today to amend that condition to suggest that the county is the one to issue the easement. Originally, it had been the requirement for the other owner to grant that easement. I'm saying as Commissioner Fitch had also said, it makes it easier with the county were to provide that easement to them. Instead, does that answer your question?
It does. Sorry, I didn't pick up on that subtly. Um, okay.
This is Conrad Lattis. I just would like to comment on that as well because under the statute, uh, that CRS 432302F, it says notwithstanding any other provision in this subjection, the Board of County Commissioners may provide that title to the vacated roadway shall vest subject to a private access easement to benefit designated party. So under the statute, um, the county would vacate it subject to the easement. So the statute does not provide for Ms. Burbank granting an easement to the Hartzells.
Got it. So just to clarify, Commissioner McMillan, in that case, the county would vacate essentially with the condition that they are granting an easement for the access sort of to the uh Hartzell property.
In the case for option two, I believe that that is correct. That's what we're
Okay.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. Um, just to give you my thinking behind my proposal for not granting an easement is that there seems to be such friction between the parties in regard to uh their properties and the boundaries of their properties that I just feel like moving forward, if there's a clean division of property without any easements, it's very clear whose property is whose, and they can move forward without having to deal with some of these other issues.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. Um, yeah, I'd like to weigh in on that. I, I agree with what you're getting at, Anne. Um, I would actually tend towards the easement because um, we're not actually evaluating whether or not there's a neighborly dispute. We're actually kind of going with, uh, the way that I look at this is the intent with these vacation rights uh is to allow cleanup of a, a bunch of old right of ways and just sort of a lot of messiness. Um, and to me, doing the subdivision and getting rid of the right of way and cleaning that up, we're not intending to, to change the functioning per se. And so I'd actually be in favor of the easement as necessary and very clearly defined uh in terms of the, you know, the multimodal requirements so that we can, we can have a very clear definition of what we mean by the driveway to be evaluated after the survey has been done. Um, but basically allowing for an easement to allow the continued functioning of the, the Hartzell cabin as it has been for the last many, many decades.
This is Commissioner Gargano. Yeah, that's where, where my lasting questions kind of are. Is it clear enough what we're looking for out of that survey? So that we know after it's done, if an additional easement is even needed, right? And what the definition of the driveway is, because if we're not very, you know, clear about that, then, then if we grant the easement, we're not actually really clearing it up. So yes, that is my, I am with you.
Uh, I think, I think the only, this is Commissioner Bloomfield, the only, the only further question that I still have uh is Ms. Burbank mentioned the idea of a gate. And I do have some concern of it, it's still not clear to me exactly what her access to her property is. And if the Hartzell's were to put up a gate, does that actually restrict her functionality as it has been for decades?
This is Commissioner Gargano. I don't think you can, if it's an additional easement, you can't do a gate around and around the easement, right? Because both parties need to be able to use that, the easement portion. So they wouldn't be able to do a gate over the easement. I, you could, staff can tell me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding.
I, I guess I would say that if the driveway is completely on the Hartzell's now lot, then do, would we actually have to have a mutual easement so that?
No, I think, so Commissioner Fitch again. Uh, my understanding would be the opposite, which is that the easement would be granted to the Hartzell's for access to their property. And uh, the Burbanks or anybody else could be denied permission to park or to block that easement.
Right. They, this is Commissioner, um, they would be, other people would be denied access or ability to block it. But it also means that the Hartzell's can't necessarily like fence it in either. Cause an easement's different than ownership.
Um, this is Commissioner McMillan. I, I think the the fact that we're having difficulty trying to visualize this right now kind of supports what Commissioner Goldfarb said that, you know, the code says it gets split 50/50. We make the, the split of the property. And then it's to those owners to figure out how they stay on their property. I think a grand easement kind of confuses things a little bit and perhaps unnecessarily. So I would recommend, or it's my position to, to, to go with what Anne has recommended um, to just split the property uh without the easement personally. I, I could be swayed. Uh, I don't think that's a hardened fest rule on my part, but I, I think it's just a lot cleaner and simpler to just do what the statute says we're supposed to do and, and move it along.
This is Commissioner Gargano again. A, as long as we believe that does not remove their multimodal access to their property, right? We don't, without a survey, we don't know a hundred percent that that choice grants them access. We have a pretty good guess that it does. But it's not a survey.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to invite staff to comment.
Yes, please.
If there's any comments to be made.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman. And this is obviously a very interesting discussion. Um, I think I will, excuse me, I'm gonna clarify the fact that the two, the option to be does give direction for the circumstance if an easement were not provided, that the op, the applicant will ultimately need to be relocating their driveway. So the question as to would it prevent their access currently? I think the answer is it might, it might not, but the survey will tell. And if the survey provides enough evidence that there is not enough space for that driveway access and they're not granted an easement, then they need to move that driveway. I mean, I think it's kind of as simple as that. Um, I do, under, one other comment I would add. Um, maybe we condition if you decide to go up to A for the easement, that the land survey be obtained and affirmed in advance of a condition to require an access easement, because that's what's going to determine if an access easement is needed for the timing of such.
This is Commissioner Gargano. I think that's the language I was looking for. So I, I
I would agree with that. Summer, do you have any comments?
Uh, I think, I think it's good at this time. Thanks.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. Um, Commissioner Bloomfield, to your point that um, you know, we're trying to clean up messiness. And I think Commissioner McMillan uh spoke to this as well. I, I think that the easement business just con- continues the mess and messiness. Um, not so much, uh, I, I, I'm not focused so much on what the parties are actually saying and you know, the disputes that are going on, but the fact that this without an easement just makes it absolutely clean, no issues, move forward.
No issues as long as a split down the middle truly gives them multimodal or an opportunity for multimodal access to their property.
And this is Commissioner Goldfarb again. And, and if it doesn't, then they, then they move their driveway a bit.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess my position as Commissioner Bloomfield is that uh an easement is less messy than having someone move their driveway in order to clean up legal distinctions.
This is Commissioner Shu. Um, I don't know if this will simplify or complicate things. Um, I want to back up a little bit. Um, first, my view, I think the alleyway, I haven't heard any comments against it. I think um, you know, the vacation, you know, half to the Elwood Trust, half to um, Hartzell property in that area, and then all to Hartzell's between them. Uh, I think that satisfies the criteria for vacation. It's, there's encroachment. Um, there's no right of way access issue. Now, the triangle portion, um, I did want to mention, I have a interpretation of uh 10 101 E2 that differs from staff. So staff mentioned that the, the public need was road related. Um, I don't view this, read the statute that way. The statute says, you know, it's in reference to preserving rural and historic character and environmental resources of the Eldora Townsite. In my view, uh, there's nothing that limits need to just building roads. So if that is the case and we, and that is a need, then uh, the statute says the board shall not approve a vacation if that is true. Now, if that's not true, um, I don't think the county should outsource our view shed and biodiversity protection to private parties. So my view on the triangle portion is either to um, not vacate it at all to anyone or to vacate in half with no easement, no conditions on preserving anything that makes it super clean. Drive, the whole thing could be plowed to be one big driveway, which would be unfortunate. Um, in my view, but I don't think that, I think that would be consistent with the decision with a determination that need does not include, um, you know, this view shed area. So this is kind of like option this is kind of like option three, I guess, here to, um, kind of a cleaner division. Or my, I guess my option four is just deal with the alley. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Uh, this Commissioner Fitch, so I think I am persuaded by Anne and others that we need the clean division, which is simply to divide the triangle between the two parties. Uh, without the easement and that probably will require some change in the driveway. But I think that's okay. I do want to respond to David's concern about the view easement and biodiversity. I think that's met in this case because that most of the property is in the floodplain and has very strict uh, requirements that would say no additional development really can go into the vacated space. And that the vacation itself is not increasing the development potential because of the view corridors and because it's all in or most of it in the floodplain. So I think it does come down to the question of uh, dividing the baby in South Solomon terms. Uh, and the clearest way to do that is what's indicated in the statutes, which is to divide it half and half between the two contending parties.
This is Commissioner Nasky. Thank you, Sam. I appreciate that and and all of the comments, really. I definitely, um, I feel like the clean split in between the two is the most fair. And, um, I think we have those contingencies in case that the survey comes back and they don't have full access um, through that. So I would, I would support the split of the triangle piece with easement.
Melanie, can you, uh, this is Commissioner Bloomfield. Um, I'm not sure what those contingencies are. If if we do a clean split, what, what guarantees them that they have the right of way?
The survey coming back to make sure that they have enough access to drive on, for their driveway.
But if the survey comes back that they don't, then what's their? What's their?
To, um, to move that portion of the driveway to contain, contain that split with no easement.
Okay.
Perhaps, this is Commissioner McMillan, to give everyone a little bit of comfort. There's thirty eight feet of frontage, I think, was the number I heard, if you split this down the middle. You ought to be able to get a drive access off thirty feet. So that's why I feel comfortable about it, that we're not going to just create another problem here. I feel like there's a solution. If it was like ten feet that we were talking about, then maybe I'd be more concerned.
So just is there any further discussion or does any, does someone have a motion?
Um, I, this is Commissioner Shu, um, just reading the language of, in the packet of, um, I think one of the options, so any development, including buildings or structures of any kind, shall be prohibited on the tr- vacated triangular portion, dot, dot, dot. Except for private fences under six feet that meets Boulder County standards and infrastr- and infrastructure required for the maintenance and upkeep of the existing driveway. So that does not allow for moving the driveway as I read it, maintenance and upkeep.
Read the, this Commissioner Goldfarb, can you read the language just prior to commission, uh, the upkeep portion of that? Infrastructure?
Infrastructure required for the maintenance and upkeep of the existing driveway.
Commissioner Fitch, I think that language is in option one. The question is whether that's in option two. I'm not sure I see it.
I don't. This is Commissioner Goldfarb, I don't.
So, uh, so Anne, if you want to make your motion for the option two and no no easement by the county, I'd be happy to support that.
Nathan, can you put the language up on the screen for the option two?
And this is Leanna James, Assistant County Attorney. Before we get a motion, I want to make sure that all commissioners are looking at the relevant conditions related to what I think the motion is that you're going to make. And they're on page fourteen of the staff recommendation. The title for that is recommended conditions of approval for vacation of the entire twelve foot alleyway or alley, as well as a triangular po- portion of the right of way within Old Eleventh Avenue without an easement.
Yes, but haven't they been actually changed per Nathaniel's presentation?
Yes.
And, and this is Commissioner
Suggested change. I just wanted to make sure because it looked like, um, we weren't looking at the correct condition six for the development within that triangular.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Shu. I, I see I was looking at the wrong one, but, um, and and yeah, condition six does say as well as improvements for the necessary relocation. But I do agree, I would, it would be helpful to see the language of option two again.
Commissioners, would you like me to share my screen? I'm sorry, I was hoping that was you, you were asking me. Okay, I can do that. So as shown on the screen, hopefully you can see this is without an easement. And, uh, the options are listed as such. I I would recommend that you include the amendment to condition seven to reflect a hu- in a one year, uh, you know, timeframe. And the option, actually, I think five remains because we're discussing as the survey would come back, they would need to relocate that driveway if necessary. And then six is regarding any infrastructure and maintenance upkeep of the existing driveway as well as improvements for necessary relocation. So I think that still applies.
Yeah.
And then we have the modification to item three to change it to the south.
Southwest corner, yes.
Yeah.
Believe those are all the changes.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Um, I would, can you pull that, uh, your screen so that we can see that, that? Yeah, um, I would make a motion that we, um, conditionally approve the vacation for the entire twelve foot alley, as well as a triangular portion of the right of way within all twelve Old Eleventh Avenue without an easement pursuant to, uh, the conditions staff has, uh, recommended conditions one through seven on page fourteen of the staff report.
Commissioner Fitch, I would second that motion.
But is this, does that include the
As amended.
As amended.
Amended.
Yes, as amended. I'm sorry.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, we'll go to a roll, roll call vote. Commissioner Bloomfield, nay. Commissioner Fitch?
Yay.
Uh, Commissioner Goldfarb?
Yay.
Commissioner McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Shu?
Nay.
Commissioner Quigley?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nasky?
Yay.
Commissioner Gargano?
Aye or yay?
Okay, I got a little confused there. I actually voted against it. I said nay. Am I correct in thinking that everyone else supported it?
I was against it.
You were against it as well?
I was opposed.
Okay, so it passes with two opposing. Okay, thanks to everyone for all of that. And we will now go on to item number two, docket SU dash two one dash zero 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 two slash SPR dash two one dash zero zero three three, the Cooper Vacation Rental and Residential Edition. And the staff planner is Ryan Kassirik, hopefully pronounced, pronounced that correctly, Ryan.
Got it.
And, uh, go ahead and with your presentation, please.
Okay. Sharing the screen here, we're all looking at, um, PowerPoint. Um, my name's Ryan Kassirik, Planner One with Community Per- Community Planning and Permitting Staff. Uh, here today to talk about SU twenty one zero 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 two slash SPR twenty one zero zero three three. Cooper Vacation Rental and Residential Edition at four five eight County Road ninety. Um, so hopping into our vicinity map, this is where we're located at. This is the peak to peak highway, I was seven, near Allen's Park. Um, about a quarter mile down County Road ninety from Allen's Park. The, um, owner is the Rebecca R. Cooper Revocable Trust, Becky Cooper. She's here with us today and her agent is Mike Daly. This property is owned forestry. It's a three point five five acre parcel. It's a building lot, um, and, uh, on it is an existing one thousand five hundred twenty square foot residence and a hundred and twenty square foot shed. Seven hundred ninety eight square feet of this residence was constructed in nineteen twenty nine before requirement of building permit. Um, a building without permits or BWOP occurred in two thousand twelve for a five hundred and seventy six square foot addition to the residence. The, this happened underneath the previous owner of the property. An SPR was then filed, this is standard to rectify these, um, building, building without permits for something of this nature. Uh, so site plan review thirteen zero zero five five was approved, approving that uh, sev- uh, five hundred and seventy six square foot addition to the residence. And then they filed for building permit thirteen zero six five one, which is standard follow up on that site plan review. Um, for the building without permits, however, that building permit, um, expired. The, it fell through with the previous owner, um, thus expiring the SPR. Thus, there's a five hundred and seventy six square foot addition to the residence that still does not have a permit. So the request today is twofold. Um, one is a special review for a vacation rental, so that's why we're in front of you all most of the time. Site plan reviews are handled administratively, uh, but in this regard, um, we're here for a special review for a vacation rental of a hundred and twenty days per year of up to six guests per night with a three night minimum stay and a site plan review to permit the existing, um, both the hundred and twenty square foot unpermitted shed. It's unclear if that shed would actually require building permits or not. It's close to the square footage limit or the square footage trigger for building permits and the height of ver- building permits. So it's included at the site plan interview. And then, um, the site plan interview to permit the five hundred and seventy six square foot unpermitted addition to the residence. So that's what we're here for today. Just a quick run through here, um, vacation rentals. Uh, this code update happened earlier this year. A vacation rental is, occurs when a booking party is renting for a duration of fewer than thirty days at a time. Um, where the dwelling unit's not the primary residence and it's rented for more than sixty days per year. When it's required to be approved by special review, uh, when it's exactly what we see highlighted here, um, on a parcel less than five acres that's unsubdivided. So here's our aerial of the property, circled in yellow is the location of the residence. Um, we'll go through some of the relevant maps here, uh, that we have for the property, first one being the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan maps a riparian area in what we call the northern most third of the property. And then, uh, maps the peak to peak scenic corridor. Those are view protections from peak to peak highway, when, uh, like we saw on the vicinity map was to the east of this property. Going into our site plan, uh, this is flipped, so seeing our north arrow down at the bottom, north is to our left, not the top of the screen. The driveway fall, it's an existing driveway that's already there, comes into the property. Um, it is, it goes in front of the residence. This portion of the residence here, and we'll look at a floor plan in a second, is what was built in nineteen twenty nine. Um, the portion out here is the addition that was built without permits to the residence. Um, I also want to note here, uh, three parking spaces for the vacation rental located here. And a fourth one, it's actually, um, listed as a one parking space, EV charging is listed. So it's electrical vehicle charging listed here. Also note the, um, emergency turnaround being located on the driveway past the residence. So this is the floor plan for the residence, again, asking to do a vacation rental um, up to a hundred and twenty nights per year for up to six guests with three night minimum stay. So, uh, you're looking at two bedrooms and then a sleeping loft. You can see right here, built above, um, also the line here, drawing out what was existing house. So where the living, kitchen, dining and that loft is at. And then, um, that addition that was built, unpermitted addition of five hundred and seventy six square feet located here. Zoom way in, I hope this isn't too messy for everybody. This is the parking. So again, here's the residence, right? The, um, portion built in nineteen twenty nine, the five hundred and seventy six square feet built without permits here. Um, they're calling out one parking space, EV charging located right here next to the residence and three more additional parking spaces up here. Here's the existing, that hundred and twenty square foot shed as well on the, um, property. So some pictures, um, my car parked, not in the parking space, but just kind of in front. The parking space is actually being, uh, kind of behind my car over here. We can see from the aerial, uh, there's trees sort of in the way again, you can see the trees in the picture. Um, this is generally the parking area. This is looking through here, kind of elevations related to our, the site plan review portion of this, um, application. So, um, this is what the property looks like from the west, from the southwest, from the north and from the northeast, um, you can see addition that was built onto the property, especially here in the northeast. And then coming around, looking from the east in the south at the, uh, residence, here's our, that a hundred and twenty square foot shed as well, built on the property. And then site photos, just again, some sort of following on good site plan review, looking at, um, out away from it, what the property faces out to, looking northwest and west. Heavily forested area, um, looking east, and this is south along the existing, uh, driveway that comes into the property. Um, some net, quick neighborhood photos are in here as well, just again, kind of following in line with the site plan interview and looking at the character of the property, um, these photos being taken from the surrounding neighborhood. So we'll hop into, uh, our referral response that we received. Um, this went out to the standard typical referral agencies. We got comments back from Building and Safety Inspection Team talking that, um, this must meet through the application must meet the requirements of the licensing, licensing ordinance, including inspections for the, um, vacation rental. And, uh, an inspection is required for that. And then a building permit is also needed for the unpermitted addition, similarly like how we saw previously. There's an SPR site plan interview approved, and then a building permit came in. That will need to be, that same step will need to be followed for this. Um, Development Review Team, Access and Engineering confirmed legal access. Uh, like I kind of pointed out earlier, um, they did talk about a couple of things needing to be, um, provided with uh, before, um, licensing and permitting, uh, can be issued, which is that the applicant will need to submit a driveway design showing the driveway with meeting standards. Um, there are some areas of the driveway that are not, uh, twelve feet wide. Standards says the driveway needs to be twelve feet wide. They seem to be in the area of ten to twelve feet. And staff feels that it can be met, but, um, they need to provide a updated site plan showing driveway design meeting standards and, um, need to also provide updated site plan showing compliant emergency turnaround design located before the residence. Um, they also included a recommendation that reflective markers be placed along the driveway. For better vision, especially during times of snow cover. Um, Public Health noted that the Public health noted that the separate system the size for three bedrooms accommodates six people, so it can accommodate the number of guests they're proposing. Wildfire mitigation team looked at this and found and provided standard comments to the vacation rental. No outdoor fires and the applicant must provide guest information, follow along with the licensing requirements. The site plan review also requires and be sort of work in concert with each other, but. Wildfire partner certification potentially requiring some updates to the property that would. Whether it be defensible space or retrofits to the structure, those would be determined. Through the wildfire partners assessment after this application. And there's a number of referral agencies with no concerns. And a number of referrals with no response as well. So we sent this out, ninety three notifications were sent for public comment. Seven comments were received in opposition to this application, voicing concerns regarding. Noise from guests on the property, noise traveling off of the property surrounding private parcels. Increasing traffic to both the Allen's Park area and to the immediate adjacent neighbors, traffic coming from this property. There is concerns with increase of use of trails and open space in the surrounding area, this is up near. Open space properties that have recently had changes in parking regulations and things of that nature, so there's concern with. Increased traffic of those. Facilities, concerns with guests wandering on a private property disrespecting the environment. And guests being uneducated with wildfire and appropriate wildfire behavior. One neighbor did comment against the vacation rental. For many of the reasons that I just discussed, but was in support of the addition. So I'll hop into now the criteria analysis, I'm going to do the special use criteria first. And then we'll go through the site point interview criteria, these are the applicable criteria to these to their application, so. Four dash six oh one, one, except as otherwise noted, the useful comply with the minimum zoning requirements, the zoning district in which the use is to be established. Also comply with all other requirements, so cannot be used. The vacation rental cannot be used by guests or marketed for wedding events, wedding or other events, the applicant. Must maintain a vacation rental license, which includes, we talked about before, going through wildfire partner certification. Providing both information to and ensuring that guests are understand that they're not permitted to have outdoor fires except for gas grills. A local manager will need to be responsive within one hour in person. A the building code, safety requirements and inspections will need to be followed, so. Building inspection will occur, proof of insurance, remittance of taxes and then. Guest information is posted in the residence, including good neighbor guidelines, wildfire safety and evacuation route information. Wildlife safety guidelines and then information on OWTS, which is your onsite wastewater treatment system usage guidelines. Moving to the next criteria is four six oh one two, use will be compatible with the surrounding area. So the surrounding area is residential with many year round lived in homes and some seasonal homes as well. Allen's Park area does have a history of seasonal tourism and lodging accommodations, particularly as they relate to. Kind of summer months. Our development review team, access and engineering reviewed the traffic numbers for this. Application and found that the use will not exceed twenty seven average daily trips and that there's no concerns with anticipated traffic as they're less than the thirty. ADTs expected for the use of this property. It's recommended that the applicant and put this in here as well, that the applicant post reflective markers along the driveway to delineate the driveway for guests, especially during times of snow cover. Number three, the use will be in accordance with the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan, so there were two resources identified in the comp plan. On this parcel, including about the peak to peak scenic corridor in a riparian area designation in the northern most third of the property. Staff was not able to see and staff has no concerns with views of the residence from the peak to peak highway. And doesn't find any impact to scenic corridor from the proposed use. Nor is the location of the residence and parking area expected to impact the riparian area, just as it's. Not located in that part of the parcel, the riparian area is associated with a creek that runs down and. To the north of the area that's been disturbed on the parcel. All to say, in following up with this too, is parks and open space, natural resource planner viewed the application and expressed no concerns. Four six oh one seven, the use will support a multimodal transportation system and not result in significant negative impacts to the transportation system or traffic hazards. Legal access, like you said, has been demonstrated. Like we noted earlier, the existing driveway width does not comply in certain locations with the minimum width required, which is twelve feet wide. Areas it seems to be closer to ten. Furthermore, the emergency access turnaround is located after the residence, so it's to the east of the residence. Which doesn't comply with the standards either, it needs to be before the residence. However, there appears to be room to both widen the driveway to standards in the locations where that would be needed and to. Provide an emergency access turnaround location that complies with the standards before the residence. There exists enough space to provide the parking that's required, which is. Three parking spaces for guests and one parking space for local managers as well, so with this and with the conditions included. In the staff recommendation, staff thinks this finds it impacts to be minimal there. So now we'll jump into the site point interview criteria, which is four dash eight oh six A. This is here.
Ryan, sorry, this is Summer Frederick with CPMP, I'm going to interrupt you here. What it what the planning commission, what the planning commission's purview is for this application is simply the SU. Application, so I think if you can skip over the SPR criteria and. Move on, then that will be what the planning commission needs to consider.
Okay, well, then we'll move, we'll go right over these and get to our recommendation. So community planning permitting staff recommends that the planning commission recommend conditional approval for docket. SU twenty one zero zero two SPR twenty one zero zero three three Cooper Vacation Rental, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation. Those conditions be to provide a development agreement for review and approval by county staff prior to issuance of license or permits by the. CPP and CPP department. And prior to recordation set agreement, maintain a valid rental license. And that it not be marketed for wedding, reception or similar events that the rental is approved for maximum one hundred and twenty. Days per year at the minimum three night stay, it's that the vacation rental is limited to occupancy of six individuals. The approved size or the development, so this would be more to the site plan review with the approved size. So with this condition as well, so that we go to look at eight, the license application applicants must submit a driveway design that complies with. Boulder County multimodal transportation standards, that's our parcel access standards widening the driveway. And if the required improvements involve more than fifty cubic yards non foundation or earthwork, then the applicants must also obtain a grading permit. Prior to issuance of license, the applicant signed an access improvement and maintenance agreement. At license application, applicant provide a site plan showing the dimensions of the turnaround area and distance of it from the house. Eleven is associated with the site plan review and twelve is associated with site plan review as well. So finally, thirteen, the applicant shall be subject to the terms, conditions and commitments and record in the file for docket. SU twenty one zero zero two SPR twenty one zero zero three three Cooper Vacation Rental and Residential Edition. It's everything that staff has for the presentation.
Thanks for that, Ryan, does we have any questions for staff?
This is Commissioner Shu, just regarding the noise issues. How far is the subject property to other dwelling units? And can you see any of the other dwelling units when you're, you know, at the property itself?
So from the existing residence, I was able to see. The property immediately adjacent to the south. Through trees. I don't, it's hard to say that I could really see everything there, but and I measured that through aerial mapping and it was approximately two hundred and fifty feet from. The existing residence, that was the only one that I could really see outside of one that was. I would estimate at least close to a mile away, that was higher up on a hill and I think out of. Out of noise. Range.
Hey, do we have any other questions for staff? Okay, not hearing any other questions, we'll go to the applicant, is the applicant present?
This is Adam owner staff, the applicant and agent are present, just give me one moment to promote them and then they'll be ready to speak.
I am unmuting myself, can you see me and hear me?
I can, Ms. Cooper, if you could state your name and proceed with your with your presentation, you have about twenty minutes.
Okay, great, so Rebecca Cooper is my legal name, I'm best known as Becky. And you know, the address four fifty eight County Road ninety in Allen's Park. I don't have a presentation that I'm actually going to share with you today, it's more of just some thoughts and why I'm asking for this today that I'd like to share with you, so. You know, this has actually been a long time dream of mine to have a cabin in the mountains since I was a teenager and I went to the mountains for the first time. It was one of those things I absolutely fell in love with and in the back of my mind, it was always a dream of mine to potentially own a home in the mountains. And so thirty years of being an accountant later, I've been able to put away and save enough money to actually get one. So, sorry. I'm a little nervous, I'm not used to doing this. And so anyways, thirty years forward, here I am, I finally have it. And when I first, the first time I went to Allen's Park, I actually fell in love with it because it's such a cute community. And it is very quiet and that's what I was looking for, I didn't, you know, Estes is amazing and I love Estes Park, but. When I went to Allen's Park, it was actually exactly what I was looking for because I wanted it to be more quiet and tucked away. And that's exactly what this cabin is and it's a small community and once I learned about, started spending some more time in Allen's Park, I have a friend that lives there. You know, it was one of those things where I could retire here and that's really kind of what my goal is, is to keep this cabin. Until I can actually retire once my daughter gets out of school and move up there and live there full time. So until then, what I'd like to do is, you know, I want to get this cabin up to snuff because I bought it without the, you know, knowing that the former owners. Unfortunately, the permit was never completely approved and the updates weren't done, so. But my goal is to do everything I can based on the commissioner's recommendations to get it up to speed. And get everything legit and get under, you know, based on code. So that my daughter and I can enjoy our time there and other friends and family. In the meantime, you know, my goal would be and it would be financially beneficial for us to be able to rent it. But knowing that, it's like, I understand there are some concerns about noise and that kind of thing, but my goal would not be to rent it to. You know, to be very careful with who I allow to rent the space. So that we are have, we have people that are going to be there that also are looking for a more tucked away, quiet environment. And I'm going to follow all the recommendations as far as fire prevention and make sure that the. All the information is shared with anyone that's renting the space of safety concerns or how to use, how to use the area and. You know, where to go so that it's not impeding on any of the local residents in the area, so. With that, let me see if there's anything else that I wanted to share with you. That is it, I'm prepared to implement and and really do anything that I need to do in order to get the. Property up to snuff, so and and follow the rules as far as like the rental. Property piece of it goes, although we may not be talking about that today, but as far as the permits go. Will do whatever I need to do to get that in order.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I see a hand up, was Mike Daly your representative?
Yes, he's my agent.
Okay, Mr. Daly, do you have something to add?
Yes, I'm Mike Daly, I live at one three two four five Highway seven in Allen's Park, Colorado eight oh five one zero. I've been a full time resident here for ten years, I'm a year round resident of this community. Seven year member of the fire board and I'm an architect and I've done many site plan reviews and home designs in this area. And I did do the previous site plan review, but that's not on the table, so I'll skip on. Regarding the sub, the issue, county went through a major effort. The county went through a major effort to adopt a new vacation rental regulations late last year. As I read them, they have made every effort to address the issues that have arisen from the mostly unapproved and unregulated rentals that have gone on in this area for years. As a longtime resident, I congratulate the county on these regulations. I think the effort to create responsibility for landlords renters is very clear in them. And will be accomplished with these regulations. I personally love the year round ban on renters having outside fires in the regulations. Ms. Cooper has gone through the regulations as well as I, and she is not asking for the maximum days, which would be two hundred a year, but only a hundred and twenty. Which would support her family goals for the property. She is, okay, so going to go beyond what the county is asking. She is off not offering less than a three night stay, which it could be requested at a daily stay. She will be a participant in Ainen, which is the Allen's Park Neighbors Emergency Network, which is proven to be invaluable. There as during the two thousand thirteen flood, our dead ended Century Link service was cut off for days from nine one one calling. Outside of our three oh three seven four seven calling area. The fire department and sheriff ultimately stations a person at the firehouse to field these calls and relay them to emergency services as required. Outside the calling area, the loss of nine one one calling has occurred three other times since the flood. In these cases, Ainen has used its door to door network system, and this is Ms. Cooper would be a part of, to notify each other of any emergency. And how to contact the fire department directly. While there is no area wide cell service in the entire area, basically from Low Lake on the north. To Lions on the east and Netherlands on the south, Ms. Cooper will have a landline at the house. So reverse nine one one calling can contact herself when she is there or renters when they're there in an emergency. This will also benefit Ms. Cooper's family and renters if they need to contact nine one one services in the event, even in the event of emergency of their own. So many renters are unable to be contacted in emergency evacuation if they're not part of Ainen or have a landline, in our case, we will have both. Ms. Cooper will prepare and provide to prospective renters the county regulations, her additional rules in advance of their booking. And make this part of their contractual obligation to rent her house. I'd also note this property is not been an unlicensed vacation rental under Ms. Cooper's ownership and was previously an owner occupied property. Ryan has presented the staff's view on this proposed vacation rental. Is mean expectations of the new regulations from county and. We concur with his points. In conclusion, I would encourage support of this issue as this proposal meets and even exceeds the new county criteria. To send a message to the other property owners in this mountain area to try to get their rentals approved through this process, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Does, do any of the commissioners have a question for the applicant? Okay, not hearing any, does staff have any response to the applicant presentation?
No.
Okay. Do we have any other further questions before we go into public hearing? Okay, I will go through the. Procedure for the public hearing, all members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the PC homepage beforehand. Once those who signed up. Once those who signed up speak, uh signed up in advance have spoken, I will call for any additional members of the public to speak. If you join by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address, and docket number in the chat box to the right. As each person who has joined by computer and signed up to speak is unmuted, Zoom will adjust your participant status so that. You can speak and be seen via video. Once you are finished speaking, Zoom will place you back in the room as an attendee. If you dialed into the meeting via phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine and we will unmute you when. We call on you to provide comment. When it is your turn, the system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you are unmuted, either via computer or phone, please state your name. And address for the record before providing comment. Each speaker speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. A timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. Time can be pulled at three minutes per person for a maximum of ten minutes. You will need to provide the names and addresses of the other people. Beside yourself who are in attendance and donate in their time to you. Anyone who is pulling time will need to attend the virtual hearing. So we can verify their presence as we would at an in-person hearing. Uh let's see, members of the public will be unable to share their screens during public comment. And we will open the public comment. Uh last time I looked, we had two speakers. So it looks like Edward Yagi is the first. Uh public commenter. Mr. Yagi, if you could state your name before you begin your comments, just do your name and address before you begin your comments.
Um uh thank you. I'm in Japan. Uh it's early morning here. Are my uh audio and video all right?
Yes.
All right, uh thank you. I've timed my remarks for exactly three minutes, so please start the clock when I begin. My name is Edward Yagi and I am co-owner of a fifth-generation family property at fifteen fifteen Big Owl Road in Allen's Park. Before comment on the docket item, I have to call out the current STR rules. Under which the county instantly put every STR out of compliance while making compliance literally impossible. Staff responsible for the rules are unable or refuse to answer simple questions, do not respond to inquiries. And return application materials and payment with no comment. More than a year into the process, they have yet to produce an application form. The rules use intimidation and harassment to discourage and humiliate applicants. When STR owners complained about the county deliberately linking them to illegal activity under federal law. CP and P Director Dale Case was visibly amused. This is sick, cruel stuff. Does Boulder County employ psychopaths who went into government so they could hurt for pleasure the people who pay their salaries? This is now a legitimate question. Speaking of sick, Commissioner Matt Jones claims the new rules make things easier for everyone. And eliminate the need for public hearings like the one we're having right now. He repeats these falsehoods even after chairing meetings he claims were eliminated. Jones is either lying, cognitively impaired, or too lazy and incompetent to know what is in the rules he approved. If there are any other possibilities, please tell me. I am not aware of any wrongdoing by the Planning Commission, indeed quite the opposite. Rumor has it that the Planning Commission objected to many of the STR details, but both CP and P and the commissioners ignored all of your recommendations. Still, you are part of the county government, one that has betrayed the public trust. You might want to look into this and in the meantime, demand that the commissioners enact a formal moratorium while competent staff. If any can be found, try to fix this policy disaster. Regarding docket SU two one zero 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 two, I support it. The benefits of well-managed properties that acknowledge and address neighbors' concerns outweigh the risks and costs. The idea that STRs in Allen's Park threaten the county's housing stock was always a stupid lie. One that CP and P staff may have broken the law to promote. I also urge you to approve this application to strengthen precedent of retroactive approval of building permits. The county's current permit system is so slow, expensive, discriminatory, and impractical. That virtually all activity in Allen's Park that ought to have a permit does not. Your current system, like your STR policy, actually threatens lives and property by driving it underground. Where it might be safe, but it's probably not. In conclusion, your current STR rules are doing more harm than good and demand a complete overhaul. Only then can we begin dialogue about rebuilding trust and solving legitimate problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is Tom Kay. I'm not even going to try and pronounce your last name. Uh if you can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Hey, thanks, Mark. Uh my wife and I are here, Tom Castores.
Hi.
Barb Castores. Um thank you for giving us the opportunity uh to talk. I want to talk in a little friendlier tone, but anyways, uh. David asked um about other neighbors close to uh the property and Ryan said he he saw only one within. Two hundred and fifty feet. I can look out uh my kitchen window and and. And see the house and I uh I could probably hit it with a golf ball. There's there's several others, probably six others that are. On Dale Drive, which is, we're on three fifty-two Dale Drive. We are in uh. The uh what's called Triple Creek Development. Um we do not, Triple Creek Development does not allow. Um folks to short-term rentals. And and so part of what uh Becky said would attracted her to this area. And we'd love to have Becky as a neighbor, but uh we really don't want to set a precedent and start approving Airbnbs or rentals. And um you know, again, her house is 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 a little bit up on the hill.
Exactly across the creek. If you look at the map, we are right across the creek from her. Right across.
And unfortunately, noise travels very well here. Um when she was coming to work done last uh. Summer, I guess there were a couple workers, whenever in spring, we could hear them talking very clearly. We could hear the radio and. They weren't, you know, trying to blare anything. And I'm just afraid, we're afraid that six, uh possibly six people in a. Uh in a rental with uh, you know, three couples with a deck that's very beautiful, large deck. We're gonna, we're gonna hear a lot of noise. And and again, what attracted us to the area and attracted Becky to the area. Uh when she retires was the quietness. We just were opposed to uh having uh this. Approved in our area and um.
It would be nice if you could look at the map and see how close we are. So. See how many houses are really close and down a little bit from hers. So the sound comes right down. We had trouble with dogs behind us. With the uh previous owners and that noise travels. I mean, everybody, I kept saying, it's not my dog, not my dog, because the neighbors say, whose dog's barking? It's from that house.
So I know you got several uh other. I don't would say complaints or objections to people uh to having Airbnbs or rentals here and. And uh those are all neighbors in our area, Dale Drive, that uh are all came here. To have that peace and quiet that Becky looks for forward to when she retires. I wish she were retired early and not have to worry about it, but um. And again, love to have Becky as a neighbor, but we're adamantly opposed to. Setting a precedent and starting to have Airbnbs up here. And personally, for us, it's going to be very difficult to have. People in in that uh location that are going to be renting and having an opportunity to party up there. Thank you for your time.
Check the map and see how close we all are.
Thank you for your comments. Does uh Anna, are there any, is there any signups from the phone?
This is Anna Moller staff. No, I believe the individual called it on the phone is here for another item, and I don't see any other. People signed up in the chat to speak, so I guess this would be the last call. If anybody's interested in speaking to this item today, please enter your name and address in the chat box.
Okay. Not seeing anyone entering their name and address. Uh we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Does Stephanie have any response to the public comments?
Um not the public comments. I do want to just put out there the clarification again. Just with uh the combined docket and that the purview of the planning commission is for the site. Or for the special use review and not for the site plan reviews. That was a mistake to have talked about that here today. Um you guys are looking at the special use.
Okay. Uh does the applicant have any response to the public comments?
Hi, um so I I guess my only comment to that is, you know, um I'd like to have Mike Daly. Chime in a little bit about that because I know there are certain um protections in place for, I believe, but this is for the site planning review and I'm sorry, I'm. Ignorant in what I'm talking about there as far as like, maybe I shouldn't be talking about that piece. So maybe I'll let Mike chime in for me if you don't mind.
Okay, Mr. Daly.
Yeah, um we do recognize that Triple Creek subdivision is uh near the property and adjacent to the property. But would would uh. Just basically say, we're not in Triple Creek subdivision, so we're not under the the guidelines of that subdivision. Um as for sound concerns, uh let me back all the way up. I think that the 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 new process that the county has put in place. Has a a good system to allow. If there are concerns, which we don't think there will be, but if there are concerns, they allow the neighbors to. Easily access people that would be contacting Ms. Cooper, who lives within the one-hour response time. I think you can hear, always hear a lot of speculation about partying and loud noise at a vacation rental. And I got two responses to those claims. One, Allen's Park is not a beach. It's not an urban environment. It's not Estes Park. Where these are most likely to occur is where families come to hike and be in near. Or hike in Rocky Mountain National Park and seek the same peace and quiet that Ms. Cooper and the neighbors do. I know of approved vacation rentals uh in the area that have been approved since the very beginning in two thousand eight, two of which. How six and eight persons, where my good friend lives next to them, and he says he has never had an issue in the thirteen years. That they've been rented. And that is what we expect here. As for sound concerns, the county has regulations that set decibel limits for day and nighttime maximum sound levels. These create a common measure for all the county to be regulated to. And finally, Ms. Cooper will use this investment in her property more than the renters each year and eventually use it at full time after retirement. So there is no logic into her renting. The folks whom she feel might damage to her property or not behave properly uh when they're there. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Okay, so we have closed the public comment. Does any commi- do any of the commissioners have questions for the staff? Or for the applicant for them?
This is Commissioner Neskey. I just wanted to double check. Um I think they mentioned that uh Ms. Cooper lives within the hour, so would she herself be responding to any? Um concerns for the the neighbors? Or would she have a separate manager? And that might be for staff or or Ms. Cooper.
I think we can let Ms. Cooper answer that.
Sure, I am within an hour away and um you know, there. I, my plan on it was to maybe manage it myself if I can. If not, there is a person in the area that lives in Allen's Park that does manage rentals. Sandy, and I'm forgetting her last name. I know Mike will know her last name. And and I was going to check with her, uh work with her to be a backup. And then if it becomes an issue, um have her maybe be the property manager full time. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, no further questions for staff, then we'll go to discussion.
Sorry, Commissioner, this is Commissioner McMillan. Maybe just one more question for staff. Um I think that the conditions in in the staff report that are related to the um use or not the use review, the site site review. Are six, seven, eleven, and twelve. And um if we are to put a motion for it to approve, are are those the four that we should pull out? Can can you just confirm that or if there's others?
Yes, so it is condition six, which is about size. Condition seven, which is material color samples. Condition. Number. Eleven. Related to vegetation of disturbed area and twelve related to lighting. Those are all site plan reviews. So that's twelve, eleven, seven, six.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh this is Commissioner Shu. Um not not specific. I just wanted to um. Mention in view of public comment that our decision is not presidential. There's some talk of president either way. Just wanted to clarify that what we decide here makes no bearing on what we decide in a future application.
Um Commissioner McMillan, I'm I'm ready to make a motion, but um if some, if there are other points of discussion, I'll I'll hold out for a moment. I I believe that it it meets all the conditions for approval. I'm I'm ready to make a motion for approval.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Ariano. I'm with you, Gavin.
Ms. Commissioner Bloomfield. I I agree with that, Gavin, and I'll just add that, you know, I I hear the the concerns about noise. I think they've been addressed. Pretty extensively by the applicant. Um I think they're handled pretty well with the regulations. And in some sense, I don't think it's any different. You know, you could have a neighbor that moves in and uh. And and creates a lot of noise, has has lots of parties. Um and there are ways to address that as well and and to me, this is similar. So I'm satisfied that uh that we're striking a a good balance between allowing people to have. The short-term rentals uh and being, you know, concerns of neighborhood noise. Any other discussion? Okay, Gavin, I think you said you had a.
Yeah, Commissioner McMillan. I move that the planning commission conditionally approve and recommend the board of county commissioners conditionally approve docket SU twenty-one dash zero zero two. Cooper Vacation Rental and Residential Edition with the conditions outlined in the staff report. Um there are thirteen in the staff report. Um I would like to recommend all of them with the exception. Of conditions six, seven, eleven, and twelve.
This is Commissioner Gargano, second.
Okay, any further discussion? We'll go for a vote, roll call vote. Mark Bloomfield, I, Sam Fitch. And Goldfarb.
Hi.
Uh Gavin McMillan.
Hi.
David Chu.
Hi.
Todd Quigley.
Hi.
Melanie Neskey.
Hi.
And Leishen Gargano.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. And we will move on to. Item number three, docket SU dash two one dash zero 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 three. Smentana uh Partnership LLC Special Use Marijuana Store. Uh that is Nathaniel Scholl again. If you could go ahead with your presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman. Um and let me pull that up for you. Again, would you let me know when you can see the screen, please? I see nods. I think that means yes.
Yes, we can.
No problem. Thank you. Um once again, uh my name is Nathaniel Scholl. I'm the planner two with Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting. Development Review Team. Uh I will be presenting for you here docket SU twenty-one dash zero 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 three. This is the Smentana Partnership LLC Special Use. This is the Smentana Partnership LLC Special Use Marijuana Store. Quick project overview for you, the applicants are Smentana Partnership. This is represented by Judy Smentana, as well as SBUD LLC Starbuds, representing Starbuds, and the individual, I didn't put their name, is Dan Pavone, representation of that owner. And then Michael Foot as well. The proposal is to allow an increase of up to 250 average daily trips on a parcel with an existing marijuana establishment. The location is a parcel 7521 Ute Highway. This is a business zoned, this, sorry, the parcel is zoned business. And the, there is an existing 3,500 square foot retail establishment, that being a marijuana store on the property. Here is the vicinity map to show you the location. It is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Ute Highway and North 75th Street, between the city of Longmont and the town of Lyons. This map here shows you the zoning for the parcel, I point to it in the red arrow. You can see it is isolated and surrounded by agriculturally zoned properties to the north of Ute Highway. And then to the south, there are residential, rural residentially zoned properties. Looking at the aerial map of the property, you can see there's a structure here with a brown roof. That is the 3,500 square foot marijuana establishment on the south side of the parcel. I also point out that there's parking area, which includes 12 parking spaces. And then there are three points of access on the property, to the property. Two of those have been blocked off and are not only allowed for emergency access purposes. The one that has current access for the public is located on the, the second access to the north on North 75th Street. And I see that pointed to it in the red arrow. So I think it's relevant to give you just a very quick background as how the applicants are, why, why we are receiving this request today. 2017, in October of that year, staff issued a determination letter for a site plan review under 17-0059. This was an application to change the use of the par, property from a restaurant use to a marijuana retail sales. This was conditionally, or requested for conditional approval. In November of that year, Board of County Commissioners decided to call up staff's determination for that site plan review to a public hearing. And then at the end of that month in November, the board held a hearing and moved to uphold staff's determination subject to two specific conditions. One of those conditions I show you here on the screen, and just to point out the most kind of relevant language to that condition is the last part. If at any time the average daily trips exceed 150, the applicant must apply for and receive approval under a special use review. So that is the trigger in which the applicants are requesting today. They do believe that it would be helpful to consider this, given that they're experiencing a larger customer base to the property. And that they expect that trigger to be met within the next several years. Part of the applicant's material they provided included a traffic impact report, or really a traffic study. I am, what I've highlighted here for you on the next few slides are what staff believes are the most relevant findings and summary, summarization of that staff report, or the, of that traffic study. This first slide shows you the conclusions that staff pulled from the, the study suggesting that without consideration for the marijuana establishment, two, two findings occurred. Based on today, the intersection at Ute Highway and North 75th would operate with little traffic congestion during the morning peak hours and moderate traffic congestion during the afternoon hours. Also noted is the turning radius or the turning movement at that public northern access off of North 75th into the property. That currently has fluid turn movement and is expected to stay from the morning and afternoon peak hours. Projected to 2041, the same intersection would operate again with moderate traffic congestion in the morning hours and heavier traffic congestion during the afternoon or peak hour. The turning movement into that access would remain the same, it would be a fluid turning movement, both for the morning and afternoon hours. And again, the distinction is, first is today's, the latter is for projected without marijuana store establishment. Now with the consideration for the marijuana establishment, overall, we're looking at a fairly similar condition. That is, the, the intersection would maintain that low level of traffic congestion. Perhaps the turning movement to the access point would be a little bit more difficult. I just use the term fairly fluid as opposed to fluid. The same thing is for the projected 2041. Couple other findings, as stated here, the projected trip generation rates for this land use, which was a conservative estimate based on their, the, the application that they used, can potentially generate up to 884 trips within a 24 hour period. So that's as much as the intersection can accommodate additionally, before needing to make changes. Another point is the summary of the new traffic counts that they were, I'm sorry. The applicant was required to produce traffic counts data, which was collected during a, the week of April 20, April 17 through the 23rd. That was believed to be the busiest time of year, in association with 4/20. And they calculated, or they found that 240 trips were collected or counted on that busiest day being the 20th of April. So in conclusion here, the traffic generated by the existing development is not expected to significantly change the operations of the study intersection or cause negative impacts to the adjacent public road operations. Staff sent out the packet to referral agencies and received a few comments back. The access and engineering team stated here that legal access has been demonstrated. They do agree with the traffic, I should say, traffic, traffic impact studies findings and conclusions. And they express some concern, however, with the current parking and access based on the request to increase up to 250 average daily trips. Those specific conditions which they recommend are included in the final, the final recommendations in the pack. County Historic Preservation Team commented that a subcommittee of the Historic Preservation Advisory Board did review this application request, and as it relates to the structure on the property, and agreed to support the proposal as it's been submitted. They do recommend, though, that an applicant and/or property owner consider applying for landmark status of that structure in the future. Here, the following agencies had no conflict, and below that, the agencies that have no comment. Staff sent a notice out to 25 adjacent property owners, and four comments have been received. Those comments here are shown on the screen. They include questions of the comparison of the 250 average daily trips to potential similar rural retailers in the county. The request to allow more time for the public to comment, concerns regarding traffic increases, safety, misleading information about the applicant's submission material, and then incompatibility of this increase or use with the goals of the comprehensive plan. So staff analyzed the criterion under the code for special use review. And here, staff is listing for you those that they believe to be the most applicable to the applicant's request and how they relate to their, our recommendations. So in looking at two, under this, under the section in the code, staff here states that it is not anticipated to, sorry, that the increased use or increased traffic to 250 average daily trips is not anticipated to adversely impact the surrounding transportation network, nor negatively contribute to any change to the level of service to that intersection. And also, staff finds that that same increase is not anticipated to significantly negatively negatively impact the nature and intensity of the existing marijuana establishment or use. Staff did a few comparisons, found a few comparisons, that is, for this request to similarly zoned properties in the county. Specifically, taking an account, three areas in the county at, in which properties are located at major intersections and contain other uses similar in the business zone district. Those uses include a restaurant business, a medical facility, and a convenience store. In looking at this, again, staff here would recommend a condition, oh, let me back up for a moment, and say, given the, the potential risk to the increase of the 250, beyond 250 average daily trips, that, of which could pose on the intensity or level of that, of intensity on the activities on site. In addition to that, because the applicant has requested up to 250 and no more, that staff is recommending a condition to limit the average transportation traffic generation for the use to 250 exactly for average daily trips. Criteria in three, this is regarding the use to be in accordance with the comp plan. Staff found several policies in the comprehensive plan to be relevant to the applicant's request, and those are shown here. In summary, the top policy reflects discussions about economic development efforts within the county and the fact that the county should recognize the importance of retaining and expanding their businesses and industries. Below that is reflecting the importance of tourism and recreational economy and the continued expand, potential continuation and expansion of certain activities that support tourism and recreation. So only in limiting the amount of traffic to 250 average daily trips would staff find that, or can find, that the comprehensive plan policies are met. Staff also encourages, I know it wasn't listed on the previous slide, but there is policies regarding historic preservation. And in light of those policies, staff does encourage the property owner to consider applying for historic landmark status of the structure. Criterion four. This is regarding excessive depletion of natural resources or intensive use of land. Staff here suggests that the proposed increase of up to 250 average daily trips would not result in an over-intensive use of land nor any negative impacts to the natural resources. Noted in the applicant's narrative, there was no request to expand the facilities themselves. But staff will say that they believe there to be potential impact to the parking capacity, given the increase to 250 average daily trips, which would might, might be necessitate additional parking based on employee numbers and customer base. So staff here is recommending the, the condition as shown on the screen, requiring the applicant to submit a parking plan for review and approval to the county, to the county, showing it four additional parking spaces for their employees, which would result in 16, and include one ADA van accessible space. As part of this, those spaces should be installed and inspected by our department prior to commencement of the approved use expansion on the property. Looking at criteria number seven. This staff notes here that in the applicant's traffic impact study, they did not find any pedestrian foot traffic on, during those, the week that they collected those data, from April 17th to April 23rd. Of note, staff's research suggests that neither, there is no RTD bus stop within three miles of this property. There is neither any pedestrian sidewalks nearby. However, there is a shoulder on North 75th in which people may access for bicycle use. So in order to meet this criterion, to support the multimodal transportation system, staff recommends the condition to require the applicant to submit a parking plan, as stated earlier, but this time with a minimum of one bicycle parking space on site. And that space to be installed and inspected by our department prior to commencement of the approved use expansion. Criterion number 10, this is regarding the health, safety, welfare of the county member, of residents and inhabitants. Staff finds that the increase to the 200, up to 250 average daily trips may exacerbate the visibility of the existing low hanging chain and sign that are on the north access or the southern access point from North 75th Street. And the access point, as mentioned here on Ute Highway, particularly during low, light conditions. As such, staff recommends a condition that the requires the applicant to submit a detailed access and decommissioning plan for review by our department, showing a method for permanently decommissioning the access to North 75th Street, which, of which features would be installed and inspected by access and engineering staff. Of note, I do want to say this, the highway is a state-owned and operated thoroughfare. So therefore, we will not, we don't, the county does not have jurisdiction over it, and we cannot condition any improvements to that access point. As a reminder, all access or all requirements of the C dot access permit, which was granted to the then owner, I believe still owners of the parcel from 2017, must be complied with. So to conclude, community planning and permitting staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners, conditional approval of docket SU 21-0003, subject to the conditions outlined in staff's recommendation. And staff is available to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you Nathaniel, do we have any questions for staff?
This is Commissioner Goldfarb, I do, in regard to the limiting trips to 250 per day, how's that going to be accomplished?
Just muting myself by accident, um, thank you Commissioner. I, I believe that was addressed in the, the language of the first recommendation, which states that the applicant is going to be required to comply with, I'm just going to pull it up for myself, in case I butcher this, which I don't want to do. The average daily, average traffic generation will remain at 250 average daily trips. They will measure the traffic generation at one year and two years after the approval of this docket. And they will have to submit reports immediately afterward to our department for review. So part of this, in fact, has relevancy because of the reason, well, it's not the reason. We, we did send out as the county a notice of violation in the fact that at the previous approval, in the same ways in which we asked for those measurements, those were not given within the timeframe that, that the condition stated at six months and 18 months. So it does give them, give us, I believe, in that recommendation, a specific timeline for the applicants to provide those reports. And then if they continue to exceed that amount, again, they'll have to go through a special use review, like they're doing today.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again, thank you. I guess my question maybe is more for the applicant then, as to how they're going to accomplish limiting trips, thanks.
This is Commissioner Shu. Because of the nature of this business, should we be looking at also the maximum daily trips during 4/20? You know, I, I guess we were looking at average daily trips, but during 4/20, there could be a, a really high demand, and how is that traffic affected during that time?
I, I will probably defer, if possible, to our access and engineering staff to answer that. I do, I will say one thing in regards to that, though. What we can, what we condition in terms of the traffic limitation above or at, up to 250, what we've seen in the traffic previously during those, those dates, or certainly over the course of the number of years from aerial imagery, is that the increase to traffic has not impacted or exacerbated either the parking conditions or general traffic flow along those two roads. But I, I don't, I'm not sure if there's a better way to address that, and I think I'll defer, as I said, to engineering staff.
Hi Commissioners, this is Jennifer Saverson with Community Planning and Permitting, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, you, I believe your question was, how do we know that there's not going to be more counts on 4/20?
No.
initial, that I kind of was confused.
This is Commissioner Shu, my question may be more philosophical in that, should we be not looking at average daily trips as far as compatibility with the area? Instead, you know, maybe in addition to looking at the average Instead, you know, maybe in addition to looking at the average daily trips, also look at peak daily trips during a time that we can predict for marijuana businesses.
Um, okay, I'm sorry. I'm supposed to start my video. Um, I, there's not a whole lot of information in the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Traffic Generation Manual for a marijuana sales facility, retail facility, sort of in this kind of a suburban area. Um, and they actually did the counts on 420 this year, and their maximum trip count for the entire day for the business, including an hour before and an hour after to capture the employee trips, was 240. So if you want to make sure sort of that you, I would say, in my recommendations, I did not request the, the annual counts. That's something that in the previous SPR had been requested through the zoning part of the review. But we would obviously be looking at those if they were required. And then I would say that you could, to sort of make sure that you capture that and see what is really happening every year on the busiest day. Maybe you use the same time period that they took their counts on this year, which was between 417 and 423. So it captures that, what everybody anticipates is probably their busiest day of the year. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
This Commissioner Bloomfield, a quick question about parking. You're talking about requiring an additional four parking spots. Do those have to be paved or can they use just unpaved portions of the property?
No, they, it doesn't have to be paved. None of, they, I believe they already have some area that has sort of gravel surfacing that goes around towards the back. And we're figuring they will probably use that area. But they just need to sort of designate it, and they need to more clearly sort of mark their, their ADA accessible parking. But they, they don't have to surface, hard surface the parking lot at all. As a matter of fact, I think we'd prefer they didn't, just so that it doesn't create additional impervious surfaces.
I would agree with that. Any other questions for staff? Okay, and I think we'll move on to the applicant presentation. And can you promote the applicants? Just ask that the applicant state their name, address, as well as limiting their time to 20 minutes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my name is Mike Foot, and I'm an attorney for Starbuds. I live in Lafayette. Also, I, I'm looking through the screen now. It doesn't look like the other person that's here representing the business is on the screen, but hopefully you'll be able to call him in a little bit later. That's Dan Pavone. He is the general counsel for the business.
I do see him here. He's just currently muted.
Very good. Okay. Well, thank you. And I will mention that we had another person that was poised to appear as well on behalf of the, the actual owners of the property. And that was Fern O'Brien, but she had to leave at four o'clock. So she won't be appearing, but she did give me just a couple paragraph summary that I can read, and it was going to be on behalf of the property owners. So what I'd like to do, and I don't think that we're going to take the entire 20 minutes for the presentation, but what I'd like to do is highlight a few things from the traffic impact report. And I think that what I talk about might answer some of Commissioner Goldfarb's question or questions about the 250 ADT. And then, well, and then I should say first, what I plan on doing is just reading a couple paragraphs from, from the representative of the business owners, and then we'll go into the, the actual traffic impact report. So just give a little bit of background about the, the building and the owners. I think it's important to have that background. I think you've seen in the report that the building's been around for a long time. It's had many uses. But before it became Starbuds back in 2018, it was a restaurant. And the restaurant was purchased by a couple named Vladimir and Yitka Samantha. They purchased the building, and they, they turned it into a restaurant. And then they kept the building, they kept ownership of the building, but then ultimately in 2018, it turned into Starbuds. So I'll just read this real quick from the, from the building owners and just give you a little bit of background again. In 1959, Vladimir and Yitka Samantha left their home in Czechoslovakia, and they immigrated to America. They arrived in Colorado in 1974 and 1976 respectively. And that's when they bought that property at 7521 Ute Highway at Boulder County. So they report the property was basically in shambles at the time that they bought it. So it took them over a year along, the, the two individuals I mentioned along with their two young daughters to get rid of all the issues, the vermin that were in the property, replace flooring, do brick and repairs or repairs to the bricks to the walls. They restored it to very good condition, and they've kept it that way ever since. And in 1977, they opened up a restaurant to serve Czech food, and it was a restaurant for 40 years until, as I mentioned, 2017. So Vladimir, by then had passed away, and their daughter Judy had found a job as an assistant professor of English at a small college in Pittsburgh, Kansas. So being a very tight-knit family, they moved, and they all moved to Kansas shortly thereafter. But they do return to Boulder County in Colorado quite often. And when they return, they always check on the property. They still care very much about the property. They care very much about the surrounding area and the community. And as I said, they, they report that they're very pleased with, with how the property has been maintained by Starbuds. So I just think it's important to talk about the, the people that are behind it. You know, it's not just some, it's certainly not an out-of-state conglomerate that owns this building. It's people that care about the community, and they care about the tenants and what the property looks like. So I'd like to move on a little bit here and talk about some of the traffic analysis. As you saw from the staff presentation, the, this application is all about just the traffic. And the initial condition that was put on in 2017 was 150 ADTs. And we are asking for it to be raised to 250 ADTs. And we did choose that number for a reason, which I'll get to in just a second. But I, I would like to highlight one of the quotes from the staff report, which, you know, clearly we agree with, which is that staff finds that an increase of up to 250 ADTs will not have a significant impact on the surrounding area. We, we agree with that. That's part of the reason why we chose 250 to ask for. Also because it's consistent with some other numbers in, in many other parts of the state, where they put a limit of 250 ADTs on retail establishments. And, and also because it was a number that was, was above what we currently expect to be the ADTs over the course of a week or even a single day for the particular property. So the bottom line, I hope that you'll take away from this, is that we're asking for merely an extra 100 ADTs, which of course, I think it should be pointed out, we all know this, but it should be pointed out, that's 50 vehicles a day. 50 vehicles over the course of a 10-hour period that the, that the business is open. That's what we're asking for, and that would be a maximum. Because as I said, we don't expect anytime in the near future, at least, to get even close to 250 ADTs over the course of a week. I'll show you some of those numbers, but they're also in the staff report that you sent or that you read that they sent, that has some of the, the numbers from the traffic impact study. So an increase of up to 100 ADTs will make a very small, if any, difference to the surrounding area and the overall traffic picture. But it really will make all the difference in the world to the business because over the course of the last year or year and a half, the business has been at 150 or a little bit over ADTs, at least when it's been measured. And it's been measured several times, and it's been very difficult to keep it below 150. Although they have put measures in place recently to attempt to get their ADTs below 150, it still has proven to be difficult. And some of that, of course, is, I'm sure you would guess, is inherent to running a business, which is, it's kind of hard to, to tell your customers not to show up and buy from your business. And so, but they put some measures into place to try to get that traffic down. But over the course of time, it, it doesn't seem like traffic will get to the 250 ADTs, but it will be over 150 ADTs if, if this is approved. It will probably be closer to more like 180 to 190, maybe 200 max within the foreseeable future. So I want to first take a look at the averages that you've seen. And, and the averages, I'm going to pull up a PowerPoint here in a minute, and I hope that I don't mess anything up about pulling that up. But the, the averages only tell you some of the story. But you know, they tell you an important part of the story. As I've said, we don't really anticipate the business is going to consistently hit 250 ADT in the foreseeable future, but we did want a picture of what it might look like in the future. And the way to get an accurate picture, at least an average of what it might look like in, in the near future, would be to measure it during the busiest week of the year. And so we asked for the, the traffic to be measured during that week, leading up to 420 and immediately after 420. 420 was on a Tuesday this year. And so we started measurement on Saturday, went from Saturday all the way to Friday during 420 week. So that's why we ended up doing that, because it could be two to three to five to six years down the road. Who knows that, that the customer base will increase, and we may end up getting somewhat close to that. But we wanted to kind of take a look and see what that would look like if we got close to that, as far as the number of ADTs that came to the property. So, but let's just assume, you know, that we get to 250 ADT if it's approved. I, I just want to put this in context, because if you get to the 250 ADT, you have to, you know, of course, divide that by the 10 hours the store is open. And that's, that's a total of 25 vehicle trips per hour, which is really 13 cars. Because I think as noted in the report, you probably have read, there's no RTD route there. There's no real pedestrian access there. It's not close to any kind of, any kind of population centers or significant population centers. And so the only way to get there is through a vehicle trip, not RTD. You can ride a bike there, of course, but as far as pedestrian access goes, that's just probably not going to happen. So, you know, I, I think, again, that's assuming that we get to the 250 ADT, which didn't even happen during the week of 420. The most we got during the study was 180 ADT with 240 vehicle trips during 420. And that's the most that we saw during this particular study. But you know, like I said, we should assume that we're getting 250 ADT, because number one, that's what we're asking for. Number two, we do believe the business's customer base is going to grow, although it's not anticipated to jump straight to 250 anytime soon. And C, I think we have to assume that there won't be significant changes to the business model like home delivery, although that's on tap with, with other marijuana businesses. Maybe for this one in the future, depending on what Boulder County wants to do with that and the application along those lines. But we can't assume that that's going to happen, although if it does, then that will change. It will likely change the ADTs to and from that facility. And then also just to narrow it down a little bit further, what we're asking for is not, you know, we're asking for just an extra 100 ADTs over the, the existing 150 that are allowed. So, you know, kind of breaking that down a little bit, using the same analysis, that's 10 extra ADT per hour or five extra cars per hour that we're asking for. Meaning, you know, on average, one extra car per 12 minutes in that area. So I hope that you'll see that this picture presents a, a picture of a pretty small impact when you look at the averages as well as the overall existing traffic in the area. I think you all know that Ute Highway is a very busy thoroughfare in the area. It's really the only east-west thoroughfare in northern Boulder County, at least one that goes all the way through, particularly from I-25 all the way to Estes. It gets a lot of the tourism traffic to Rocky Mountain. And C dot says that it averages right around that intersection, almost 11,000 vehicle trips a day. So if you look at it from averages, and if you look at it from the perspective of 11,000 existing vehicle trips a day, the number 100 of extra ADTs that we're asking for is a very, very small number. Now, 75th Street, as you know, probably is not nearly as traveled as Ute Highway, but still C dot shows or the information shows that it's 1,550 vehicle trips a day in that area as well. So again, even if you look at that number, it's pretty small what we're asking for here. It would be nice if we were able to reduce it through things like an RTD route or encouraging RTD usage or pedestrian traffic, but we just haven't found a way to do that. It's just not conducive to that, although the idea of cycling is a good one. And, and you know, I think that'll be fine, just putting a bike wreck there to try to encourage some cycling to get to the facility. So this is where I'm going to hope to, to screen share here and show you a couple of things from the report. And highlight what we have. Okay, for some reason, my PowerPoint isn't pulling up. I apologize for that. It seems like it always seems to work that way. So what I'll do is I'll just kind of verbalize what I'm talking about, and you can refer back to the, the report that you have, because this information that you have is already there. Okay, so as I said, we did this, we did this study of the traffic trips that were occurring at the facility during the week of 420. I'll just draw your attention to Friday, which was the Friday after 420. What we saw there was 185 trips. So 185 trips that day on the Friday after 420. That's actually pretty consistent with what we've seen in the past in other studies. And that equals 93 cars throughout the day. I saw a chat coming up that, so I'm wondering if I'm getting timed. If I'm going too long, could you tell me how long I'm going, because I may be going too long, and I don't want to do that. So, you know, that's 185 trips is 93 cars per day. That's what we see on the Friday. On Saturday, you know, which is a weekend day, we saw 174 trips, which is roughly 87 cars throughout the day. And I think what you'll notice if you take a look at those numbers is that there's really no effect during the rush hour periods, because the store doesn't open until 9:00 AM to begin with. But then secondly, when we get to the 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM, there's not, there's not a lot of traffic. Most of the traffic really comes during those two days and during every day, frankly, if you look at the data in more detail. Around the lunch hour, maybe a little bit before and a little bit after, but it doesn't occur during the rush hours. So hopefully that will address some of the concerns as well. Things were a little bit different on 420, as I mentioned, that we hit 240 vehicle trips that day, so 120 total vehicles that came in during that 10-hour period of the day, 12 vehicles an hour average. Although during the four o'clock hour, that was the most that we've seen, which was, I think, 35 total vehicles during the four o'clock hour. But that's the most that we've seen, and that's the most that would be expected over the course of the year, frankly. And as I said, that's consistent with other traffic counts that we've done. I don't think that you have in your, in your packet, some of the other counts that we did. We ultimately did traffic counts, and it shows about the same. So again, we're looking at somewhere between 180 and 280 for the foreseeable future, except for on 420, the actual date, which this time didn't exceed 250 vehicle trips that day. So I guess I'll go ahead and conclude, because I want to make sure, of course, that Mr. Pavone gets a chance to address you before our time runs out. As the traffic impact study said, this proposal of 250 ADT is not expected to significantly change operations at the intersection or cause negative impact to the roadway. It's such a really small number, given the traffic that's already there, and given the averages that we see and that it's spread out throughout the day, and especially because it doesn't really affect or won't affect negatively the rush hour periods there. A very small amount compared to the existing traffic in the area, but a very important amount to the business and its continued viability. So, you know, thank you very much for your attention here. And of course, we'll be available for questions throughout the rest of this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Pavone, you have about four minutes left in your time, if you have any comments.
Let's see, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm having a little trouble with my video, but they tell me I have a face for radio, so that might spare you some, something there. So I think Mr. Foot, our counsel, did a very good job of explaining the background here. And, you know, let me just start out by saying thank you for your time. As citizen volunteers in this process, I've been sitting with you all, and I certainly admire and appreciate all the work you do to go through this process. It is, it is thankless, and so just on behalf of our business and our footprint, thank you for, for your time. We certainly are thrilled to operate in Boulder County and work with the community, both as a retailer and also as a good steward of, of, you know, the, the area and the neighborhood. We, we certainly We, we've certainly tried to work with and accommodate any number of, um, issues that come up with the county. Um, the owner entity or the, the, the tenant here is S Bud LLC, short for Starbucks. Um, and we took over the property officially, uh, earlier this year. So we've not been, um, you know, the, the, the tenant, uh, per se, our predecessor, we get a change of ownership earlier this year. Um, you've worked with, we, we essentially uh, jumped into the fray here and found out that there was a real need from Boulder County to learn about our traffic, uh, concerns. And so we jumped right in to get all that information. And here we are uh, with the guidance of, uh, Mr. Scholl and, and all the departments. So, uh, as Mr. Mr. Foot has said, we were looking at, you know, an additional uh, fifty, uh, customers, uh, a day as a high watermark. Um, we, we don't anticipate that being the case now. And as, um, has been alluded to, we use the four twenty week as our high watermark to make sure that we knew what our highest expected volume would be. So it's a great question by the previous commissioners about one, how are we going to meet the two fifty? Um, we can meet it because we know what the high watermark is and we know what the high watermark is because we took the traffic study there in the busiest time of our year. And so, um, you know, in conclusion, this, this is about traffic. We've certainly reviewed the conditions that have been, um, suggested or, or mandated, required as it may be. And we are happy to oblige and give, uh, our commitment to meeting those conditions and making sure that there's evidence in place before we continue normal operations. We did, um, shut down our hours on Sunday to comply with the ADT requirements. Now we saw, we've seen a significant, um, decrease in sales and revenue, which has a direct impact on our employees who are, um, compensated not just as an hourly basis, but also by tips. So they're very excited, um, to get back up to normal operating procedure once we, uh, get this done. So again, appreciate your time and thank you, uh, for, uh, your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Pavone. Uh, does staff have any, any comments on the applicant presentation?
Staff does not have any comments at this time.
And any commissioners have any questions for the applicants?
This is Commissioner Shu. Um, would the applicant be amenable to the traffic measurement to be around the week of four twenty? Um, so instead of one year and two years after approval, it'd be, I assume, you know, around April twentieth, twenty, twenty-two and April twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Uh, I guess the short answer is, um, you know, we, I'm not sure that we have a, an objection. Um, these traffic studies are not um, inexpensive. And so we will have incurred another traffic study, you know, in less than, you know, let's say we get approved in August. So we've got another traffic study on par over the course of the next seven or eight months. Um, that again is a, that, that is, you know, the, 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 the reason we're asking for the, um, this number is so that we don't have to continue to come back to the commission every time or to the, to the planning commission every time that, you know, there's an, an increase. So we would prefer to do it a year out from the approval, um, just so we're not expending additional resources, uh, in a very short amount of time. Uh, but if the planning commission deems that they want to do it on four twenty, we will obviously, uh, comply.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Uh, thank you both for your time. And we will go to public comment. So currently we have one sign up for public comment. Let me go through the public comment requirements. If I could find them. Okay. All members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the PC, PC homepage beforehand. Once those who signed up in advance have spoken, I will call for any additional members of public to speak. If you joined by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address and the docket number in the chat box to the right. As each person who has joined by computer and signed up to speak is unmuted, Zoom will adjust your participant status so that you can speak and be seen via video. Once you are finished speaking, Zoom will place you back in the room as an attendee. If you dialed into the meeting by a phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine and we will unmute you when we call on you to provide comment. When it is your turn, the system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you are unmuted, either via phone or, or computer, please state your name and address for the record before providing comment. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. A timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. Uh, members of the public will be unable to share their screens during public comment. Okay, so it looks like we have Dan Burkhart uh, in the room. Dan, if you can unmute yourself and say your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes. Uh, Dan, I thought I saw you unmute where you're currently muted, so we can't hear you. It looks like we have video. Uh, we still can't hear you though. Looks like you're unmuted now.
There, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry there. Bear with me. I have not done a video public hearing ever. I've done a lot of public hearings and a lot of planning commission. I want to start out thanking you guys. I've kind of sat through the whole day here. And I appreciate all the technical details and all the things that you guys have to cover. Um, and as a voluntary, uh, process, I really appreciate it. Um, I've sat on boards, uh, similar. And I want to start out thanking you and I want to ask your help. I'm, uh, my name again is Dan Burkhart. I, uh, have, uh, my address is one one eight eight seven North Seventy-Fifth Street in Hygiene. About a mile south towards the commercial area. And, uh, I'm also representing, uh, Farm Trust Development Group, which owns a thirty-eight acre farm just east of the property, the subject property. And we have organic farming and, uh, the beautiful hay crop, beautiful property. And we know we're very active in the farming community there. And we are asking and requesting your help to really see through this very sophisticated, very misleading application. And we would ask that you would, uh, recommend denial to the county commissioner in their public hearing. And, um, we did send a letter with, uh, some details, some main points. Um, there's a lot of technical issues. I do planning and particularly the combination of transportation on a large scale related to development and private development. And so, uh, I, I just want to mention a few key topics and also if I could have time for any questions you might have, um, that would be great. Uh, I wanted to, to just reiterate a couple of things that are actually in their application, but they're very sneaky, very sophisticated. Before I do that, I want to read some, uh, main bullet points from my business partners who I'm speaking for. I'm the vice president of Farm Trust Development. This is from our, uh, the other members of our LLC. Um, among the important issues, this application increases the store's complete dissonance with the traditional hygiene community. And we are very tuned in in lots of ways. No, a lot of people out there have been out there for over a decade, uh, working in the farming community, multiple businesses all around there. And, uh, I know I am speaking for a lot of them. This issue of marijuana taking over, trying to take over our little um, beautiful little community out there is our biggest challenge. And, uh, we have other challenges, but this is a big one. And, um, this is not helping. If you look at the records, the public hearing when this was, I would say pushed through by the county commissioners at the time. Uh, I'm really thankful that we have a new board of county commissioners and I'm appealing to them on behalf of our whole community to keep a lid on this issue of marijuana. We've been through a lot and, uh, it's, it's very divisive issue. Um, the other bullet point here is this increases the number of daily trips for drug purchases on an already dangerous highway sixty-six. Now these traffic reports, I've looked at hundreds and hundreds of traffic reports. This is extremely tainted in lots of ways. And I could get very technical in it. I'm not trying to do that today. But there are a lot of issues. The traffic report, they're very focused on four twenty, which is their big day. Uh, the issue is average daily trips. And there's a lot of aspects about that. They're spreading their trips over a, their entire workday. There's what they call peak times, which is different for their business than other businesses. They're not even in a category of the actual transportation standard booklet that they're referring to. They're trying to find other uses that are close. And they're coming to conclusions that are very tainted in their favor. They don't have, uh, they're, they're talking out of both sides of their mouth, if you will. And it says here in, I think this is really pertinent to the, the actual discussion.
Mr. Burkhart, your, your three minutes are up. So if you could just wrap up your comment.
Okay, this is really pertinent. This is from their own narrative. It is not.
When I say wrap up, I don't mean getting into another item, if you could just.
Their own, their own narrative describes that they don't yet have the need, but they're being coached by the planning staff, Boulder County, to do this application now at this time for various reasons to scooch it through the system. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, uh, does staff have any comments on, oh, uh, before I do that, I guess, uh, Anna, did we have anybody else sign up?
No, there are currently no other members of the public signed up to speak. This is the last call. If you'd like to speak, please put your name and address into the chat. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing anyone signing up. Uh, so we will go ahead and close public comment. And we'll give staff a chance to respond to public comment.
Um, uh, staff at this time, um, doesn't have any additional comments to make, um, just, uh, suggest to, uh, support the analysis that staff has made, um, in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, does the applicant have any response to public comment?
Uh, just briefly, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. So, one thing I just wanted to make clear, it's clear in the application as well, but just to reiterate it is that there, we specifically made no request to expand the facility, uh, to change the facility or to do anything along those lines. It was, it was just the extra one hundred ADTs. And, and again, we didn't just do that accidentally. The, the reason is, is because that, um, the business as it is now is probably bringing in an average of say one sixty to one seventy ADTs, which is more than the one fifty that's allowed. And, um, and so we, we want to make sure that we can still run the business. Um, and, uh, and be able to accommodate the rules that the county is, is putting onto us. So, um, there's, there's no, there's no plans, uh, to expand the facility and to try to expand operations per se. If there were, then we would have put it into the application because I know as the planning commission is aware, um, doing these types of things, uh, takes a lot of time and takes a lot of resources. And you know, we would do all that at the same time, but it's just clearly all just one hundred ADTs. A very straightforward, we're asking for an extra one hundred ADTs. We, as I said before, we, we don't expect to hit it anytime soon, but, um, the two fifty, we think is a rational number and, and it's backed up by the traffic, um, analysis, which is an independent firm that does their own work. And, uh, we appreciate your consideration and hope that you'll approve it.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff or the applicant? If not, we'll go ahead and move into discussion.
This is Commissioner Shu. Um, I guess I would like to have one of the sampling days at least, if not both, to be around the four twenty weekend. And I am sympathetic to, you know, the applicant probably, you know, if it was next year, they might only have six months between approval and, um, you know, the, the sampling date. So, you know, I don't know if it could be the eighteen months and thirty months from that. Basically the, you know, we skip four twenty, twenty twenty-two and just go to twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. But, um, I guess I don't see a point in sampling a time that's not their peak generation time since, you know, right now they're at kind of a hundred and eighty during the ADT during their busiest time. I just don't imagine that within the next year, they're going to surpass that in any week other than their busiest week or two hundred and fifty.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. Uh, I'd support that as well.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. I, I can see the reasons to do a study around the four twenty time. Um, but that being said, that's seems to be the one time of year that's a really busy time. Um, and I think we ought to be looking at also just a more average time, since what we're talking about here is average daily trips.
I guess this is Commissioner Shu. I guess I'm would comment that average daily trips is just a way to measure compatibility with the surrounding area. And my concern is that compatibility doesn't matter so much in some random week in August. If, you know, there's a three-hour delay in traffic on four twenty itself, um, I think people would be really upset. Um, and I think that would, uh, not be compatible. So I think the, it's very important to measure the peak time, uh, in this case, rather than just an average time over the entire year.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. I, I agree with that. That's why I'm suggesting that we do one at uh, around the four twenty period and one at another time. Uh, I think there are a lot of businesses that have a busy, a, a, a busy period. And the rest of the year, it's not. So I, I would hate to, um, depend on that one week. Or, you know, who knows? Is it a week? Is it two days? Is it three days? Whatever it is, um, in saying that there's incompatibility based on such a few number of days out of the year.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I, I would agree with that. Uh, I think that um, did, you know, designing it around one day of the year, you know, I don't think we do that for other uh, retail establishments that maybe has, you know, maybe they have their annual sale or something like that. And if there's a little bit of extra traffic on one or two days a year, I'm not super concerned about that. Um, I guess I, one question for staff on the ADT, um, is that, is that averaged over a year? Is that is that averaged over a year or what what's the average there?
Commissioner, I believe the intended average daily traffic is represented annually. Yes, so it should be a representation of the course of the year for the average trips taken for that. Three hundred sixty-five days.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Wiggly and, you know, I would tend to agree with the assessment made that I think you did a good, good job representing an average over the year. I'm personally not too worried of, you know, a one-day potential outlier, you know, and it was evening captured in there. That that needs to be put in. I I I think it's a fair point to to be aware of, but if it was, you know, a monthly event or weekly event, I would say I'd be much more apt to to putting that in. But if it's just once a year, you know, one out of three hundred and sixty-five days, to me, that 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 feels like a a pretty big outlier that shouldn't be used as as kind of part of the baseline.
And I'm I'm curious. I I guess, uh, because I I do feel like there's value of getting the number on four twenty just as a a gauge to to David's point of like making sure that we don't have some outrageous event. And since we're talking about, um, I'm wondering if we can kind of do both without then putting, you know, further burden on having an extra uh traffic study, which, you know, does incur cost.
Uh, this is Commissioner Shu. I I do have a question for staff and or the applicant. So are we talking about a full traffic study or just someone, you know, out there counting cars over a week? So something that would be less burdensome than perhaps what was included in the pack packet?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I'm going to answer this. Um, I believe, hang on, let me start my video again. It's Jennifer Severson with Community Planning and Permitting. Um, I believe the SPR originally called for counts at, was it like twelve months and eighteen months, the two intervals that they called for, not a full traffic study. The reason they did the full traffic study was because their counts showed that they were going to need that to go through the SU review. So to go through the special use review, they needed more than counts. They needed the full traffic study. So I think if you're gonna, I'm I'm trying to look for the recommendation condition in Nathaniel's staff rec, and I believe it says limited to two fifty ADT. And does it say anything, Nathaniel, about count?
It doesn't. It specifies measured traffic generation at one year and every and two-year increase. So I think to your point, Jennifer, that is accurate in that this SU is what triggered the need to increase beyond what was allowed at the one fifty, but the original measurements after the condition were just for, the original um language was to specify just measured counts at one year and two-year intervals.
Because a full traffic study is definitely going to be more involved and expensive than just the counts. But I guess it depends kind of what what you want to see. I mean, I think that two fifty ADT is going to show more than two hundred and fifty trips on that four twenty day. But averaged out, that will be their their average, which is what they asked. They asked for up to two hundred and fifty average daily trips. So that's what we suggested the cap at.
Did you need the applicant to chime in on any of that?
Uh, we'll go ahead and ask for your input if we are.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have any comments, questions, discussion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Shu. I guess maybe, you know, I'm I'm putting this out there. I guess what I am thinking about is having the counts measured for four twenty uh week for twenty twenty-three, so eighteen months roughly after final approval. And that would satisfy me. Um, I don't really see the point of another count for a non-peak time. I, you know, I guess I this, there's some possibility that the applicant is actually over two fifty for a a seven-day period, but right now I think they had a hundred and eighty. So it's, to me, it seems unlikely they would go that high in a year and a half. But just putting that out there as a discussion point.
How about we do uh eighteen months on the four, the week of four twenty and then we could do a year later or some other determined amount of time later that's not four twenty. And that way we get a picture of both. You know, the the absolute peak week and then a a more normal week so that we can determine where the staff can determine, uh, you know, if they're if they're estimates for a total year are reasonable. And I guess I'd ask, you know, is that something that staff, that makes sense to staff or has that, am I missing something that would make that not make sense?
Um, Mr. This is Jennifer Severson with CPP again. I I would suggest, and and it may be a better way to do it, rather than have them get the traffic counts at two different times. Perhaps it would make sense to have them bookend it with a week before and a week after. So you're getting three weeks of data and it's, you know, the busiest time is right in the middle or one week after, or something that allows them maybe to do the count at one time versus splitting it up because that's the whole extra cost of getting something out there again and counting and we don't know. Maybe there's road construction that started that will impact it six months from now. That's not the same conditions as when they took the counts at four twenty. So I would say if you wanted to do that, you might consider suggesting that the the counts of the less busy time are kind of bookended or or around the same time they're doing the four twenty counts. Does that make sense? I'm not really sure I have an answer for this, like a hard answer. Uh, it's a little bit confusing, but um yeah, I I do agree that just looking at four twenty is is kind of not representative of of an average of what their traffic is produced, they produce.
This Commissioner Goldfarb, I think that suggestion gets us uh information on peak as well as average, which I think will be helpful.
Agreed. Uh, Mr. Foot, I guess I will go ahead and ask you, is that something that you would be amenable to?
Um, well, thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna have to throw that over to Mr. Pavone because he's the General Counsel of the company. I do the land use aspect of this and and he might be able to speak to that. So, sorry.
So, and just to be clear, Mr. Pavone, uh, what we're suggesting is a two-week traffic count, not full study, uh, eighteen months from now. Uh, you are not unmuted. You are muted. We cannot.
Commissioner Bloomfield, Chair Bloomfield is Commissioner Shu. Just to clarify, are we talking two weeks or three weeks? Because I thought staff mentioned bookending it.
Oh, I thought they were saying either, but.
But I, and I don't know. I mean, but maybe the applicant could speak to both.
Well, so I I guess here's my initial reaction. One, you know, there's the the cost of of doing this, which I've already mentioned, so I won't mention that again. I guess the, my question is, you know, sort of for the retailers that have to follow these ADTs, what's the precedent for their sales measurement? In other words, if, you know, you've got retailers who are selling, you know, the highest, the highest month of the year for retail sales is November. And so if you say I'm gonna, I'm gonna study Black Friday and I'm gonna study the week before Black Friday and the week after Black Friday and that's what the Planning Commission has done and previously done, that that this would align with that philosophy. But if you don't, if you're not picking those highest peak sales areas for all the rest of the retailers, I'm I'm trying to understand why, because of the, either the nature of the business, why you would decide that the peak hour or the peak month would be for this particular retailer that month. Unless unless you do it for, and and I guess in some, unless you're doing it for all these retailers in during Black Friday in the month of November, which is the highest, you know, end of November to December. Um, and there's precedent there, we're happy to apply. But if you're creating a a special precedent for this, I'm I'm not sure that gets you what you want. One, because I think the point is the average daily trips should reflect uh, an average, an average week. And these these are not average weeks. They are uh, the high watermarks and um, you know, that's if that was, you know, the 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 data is only as good as when you measure it. And so if that was the case, we we might have taken a different approach. We were we were fine with the one-year and two-year average daily requirements, but, you know, this is a different kettle of fish.
Uh, okay. Thank you for that comment. I, you know, I will say that we do consider, uh, you know, establishments that have events, we do look at those peak events and have different requirements during the events versus other times. Uh, can staff speak to uh general requirements for traffic counts for retail establishments? In terms of, is there any requirements for a particular time of year or anything like that?
Uh, I I'll just suggest it first. I have not worked here long enough, unfortunately, to 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 provide an accurate answer. And I think Jennifer might have a a separate answer for that.
I was actually going to say, I haven't been in this position long enough where we obviously don't have a lot of retail uses, large-scale retail uses that come county review. And so I I don't know. I know that the one fifty is a trigger in the land use code that requires the special use review. So anything that goes through that and has the more than one fifty and that's the trigger, we have them do a traffic study. Um, I know of a couple other um projects and approvals where we've required um regular counts after approval. Um, but the one that's sticking out in my mind is actually for a school. It's not for retail use. So um, I I think that I'm going to guess and and Summer, if she's on, can maybe correct this.
It looks like Kim might be.
Yeah, she's been, she's been paying attention to the traffic counts longer than I have, so.
Yeah, I don't know if I have a Kim Sanchez, Community Planning and Permitting. I don't know that I have a direct answer to that question, but I guess what I would add is that this application and any special use or site-specific development plans. So if you, as the Planning Commission, have a concern with any of the special use criteria, you can certainly ask for you know, measures to to mitigate your concern. So just ask that you, you know, tie that to the the criteria. Um, in this case, that would likely be, you know, the criteria that's related to transportation impacts. So I, you know, I don't know offhand, um, you know, what we've what we've required, but like Jen was alluding to, all of the types of proposals that we see in unincorporated Boulder County are so vastly different. And the impacts that we see are really dependent on their specific location and what the use that's being proposed is. So we really do try to look at these pretty uniquely. And I think you have the ability to do so as well.
Thanks, Kim.
This Commissioner Goldfarb, just to respond to Mr. Pavone, my um my suggestion of doing a a traffic study, however, whatever we're going to call it, however detailed it needs to be, um or is is more related to the site. It's not related to the type of business at all, but it's more related to the location of the business and the compatibility with the surrounding area. So that's, that's where I'm coming from on this.
What's your current thought, Anne?
What's my current thought in regard to?
Into what we would require.
Well, I I mean, the question I have perhaps in regard to doing a study around four twenty is what would be the point of that? If it came back higher, what would, what would we, what would we do? And it it doesn't really, in my mind, it doesn't reflect the rest of the year. It reflects a short period of time as as the applicant stated. It's, it would be like, you know, looking at Black Friday and then trying to um use that to determine some kind of average. Uh, I don't think it really gets you information about the rest of the year. Uh, it does give you information about, you know, maybe call it similar to a special event in in the way that we look at, the way we look at things, but and and this would be perhaps a question for staff. So if we did request a study around the four twenty timeframe uh, and it came back higher, what would, what would that mean to staff?
I would state that, you you know, I'm listening and understanding all of your comments so far. I I tend to agree with the suggestion of uh, taking two counts, not so much, I want to clarify, Commissioner or uh Goldfarb, that when you say study, you actually mean full study on four twenty and not just measured counts?
No, no, not not a full study. No.
Okay, I just wanted to, because you use the word study. So if you were to do measured counts as a representation, it it, I I don't see how that is a full representation of an average throughout the year. And it misrepresents, I do think, what we're trying to get at, which is, you know, the impacts to an increase beyond the two fifty, which that may miss is an outlier perhaps. So um, I don't know what the measured counts costs are. I'm not, you know, that's not something we ask about. But I can't imagine, I certainly imagine they're less than a study would cost. Perhaps taking three counts to, or at a minimum two, to differentiate between the four twenty holiday, if they call it that, and then another time of year might be the best way to go. And what would we think to that end? I'd have to let Jennifer or Kim speak on that one.
Here, Goldfarb, again, just let me follow up with one more thing, Gavin, if I could. So my question, I guess, is if we did a traffic count around four twenty, what would staff do with that? Assuming assuming that it would be higher than other times of the year, what would, what use would that be to staff?
So this is Jennifer Severson, CPP staff again. Um, I think that um, the reason that that Nathaniel's making the the distinction between the full traffic study is typically the full traffic study includes an anticipated trip generation that's based on a formula that's in the IT manual. And so it's not necessarily reflective of what's actually going on, what's the business is established. They don't update that manual all that often. I don't know. Well, I think that's more kind of a of a of a looking at the zoning and the land use compatibility as to what would we do if it showed that the average out of trips was going to be more than the two fifty, which they've asked for? That's something I I can't answer because the 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 two fifty cap is something we placed because it's what they asked for. And Mike Thomas, the accountant. Um, and Mike Thomas, the county engineer, we discussed this all with him, and he said that, that, you know, I wouldn't want to go beyond that with some more. You know, looking at everything and, and a little more analysis. Since they didn't ask for more than that, we didn't. Recommend that we approve more than that. Um, so that's not something my group looks at. I think that would be more of a compatibility with the land uses. Around it.
Look, this is Commissioner Goldfarb, again, it's not, it's, I, I'm, I'm questioning. If we required something around four twenty. That specifically. And assuming it comes back high. What does that, what does, what does that tell us? What would you do with that?
This is Leanna James, Assistant County Attorney, and I think I can answer your question as the condition is currently written. So at the end of condition one, it says, if at any time the ADTs exceed two hundred and fifty. The applicant must apply for and receive approval under the special use review. So I would read back to me. That if we require traffic counts over four twenty and it exceeds. Two hundred and fifty, they would be required to come back in for special use approval to get approval for. An excess of two hundred and fifty average daily trips. Now, we can, you can change that if you would like to, but that's how I would currently read the condition.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Bloomfield, um. I'm not, I'm not sure I agree with that interpretation, but what I'll say is this, uh, if we look at. Simple math, we've got fifty-two weeks in a year, so let's just say each year, each week is a two percent. Representation of the year. If on the week of four twenty, we had double the. Uh, a, a, a double the volume and therefore a hundred percent increase. That would be a fifty percent, or no, oh, sorry, a two percent. Uh, impact on the overall study of the year. Um, so I think we're talking really small numbers, even if there's a huge increase for the week of four twenty. So I think I'm, I'm now thinking about that more in favor of going with just an average week. Um, and knowing that the average daily trips might be off by two percent if, if they have an outrageous four twenty week. Does that make sense to folks?
So this is Commissioner Fitch. I think we're making this much too complicated. Uh, the standard is set in average daily trips. Picking, picking the. Peak week for that might satisfy some notion of what the peak volume is. But if the standard is average daily trips per year. Then measuring four twenty doesn't tell us. I mean, Mark, just, I agree with Mark. Uh, it gives us one reading. It was not an adequate sampling to say they're over the standard and would have to. Come in for another special use review. So I, I'm in favor of going simple, which is to go back to the question. Uh, and to staff recommendations, uh, which. Uh, on page ten and eleven. And I would move that we approve the staff recommendation. Uh, and recommend that to the county commissioners.
Commissioner Goldfarb, I would second that.
Okay, so am I, am I clear that we have a motion on the floor that is seconded? Do we have any discussion?
Commissioner McMillan, just one point. The way this condition is written right now is it says that a year after the county commissioners approve it. That's when they do the study. I, let me sure everybody's clear on that. I think it's fine, um, but depending on when this thing gets approved. That's what's driving when they do the study right now. They're not picking some random date or. And I think it's fine. I, I think you don't want to, you don't want to have the most intensive day of the year driving. You want an average. There's gonna be outliers, so I think it's fine unless this thing gets pushed to. Four twenty and gets approved by the county commissioners then, and, and then they're, and then they're counting a year later on four twenty, but. I don't think that'll happen. I think they'll likely be doing their count in September or October of next year. I'm personally fine with that, and I'll, although, uh, to approve the motion.
Uh, this is Commissioner Shu. Um, I guess just a few points, you know. One, ADT's just the standard and however we condition it, it's not. It's not saying that we have to measure it over an entire year, and in fact, it's not. Um, and my concern is about peak. Peak times, uh, so I don't consider that an outlier. I want to see the maximum, uh, where, whereas averages. Might be able to wash out, um, the issues, and, uh, I'll say the applicant measured. Uh, on that four twenty week for our consideration, so they thought it was a. Um, important time to look at as well.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be helpful to know. I don't, I don't know there needs to be a condition, but I do think it would be helpful to know. If like, say if they did account just one day on four twenty, just to know kind of what the upper limit was. I, I don't know that I want to impose that in the form of a condition, but if other people felt strongly about that, uh, no, I would. I'd be okay with conditioning this additionally to say, and they will also measure. On four twenties, just so you would know what the upper limit was. I, it'd be good information to have. I just don't know that it rises to. Becoming a condition of, of my willingness to approve, approve the docket item. But that's, that's one way you could do it.
Commissioner Bloomfield, I agree with that. I, uh, support the motion as proposed. Any other discussion? We do have a motion on the table. And I need to find my script. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Uh, Mark Bloomfield, I. Sam Fitch.
Hi.
And Goldfarb.
Hi.
Gavin McMillan.
Hi.
David Shu.
Nay.
Todd Quigley.
Hi.
Melanie Neski.
Hi.
Lucian Gargano.
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes with one opposed. Thanks, everybody, for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, so. Uh, Kim, do we have to vote on the executive session? Is that what you had in your email?
Yes, please. Um, we provided you with some language, and actually, Leanna James is, um, able to assist you with. The language that you'll need to vote on.
Yeah, um, if one of you can make a motion to hold an executive session pursuant to CRS. Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B. For legal advice on issues related to Denver Water's ten forty-one permit application. Docket SI dash twenty zero zero three.
Can you put that in the chat box?
I, I see it here, Mark. I've got the language.
Okay. Great.
I moved it, the, um, planning commission moving to executive session is authorized under CRS. Twenty-four dash six dash four oh two. Or B, related to legal advice for Denver Waters ten forty-one permit application docket SI dash twenty dash zero zero three.
Second.
That's Commissioner Shu. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Kim, can we have like ten minutes to? Take a little bio break and then we'll meet up in the teams.
Sure, you'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting once you take that vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so roll call vote. Uh, Mark Bloomfield, I, Sam Fitch.
Hi.
And Goldfarb.
Hi.
Gavin McMillan.
You're muted.
You're muted, Gavin. And now we hear you.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hi.
Okay. Uh, David Shu.
Hi.
Todd Quigley.
Hi.
Melanie Neski.
Hi.
Lucian Gargano.
Hi.
All right, the motion passes. Uh, and a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Yeah. Are you, or do you want us to?
I'm asking for a motion.
I'll move the, we adjourn this meeting.
I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any against? All right.
All right, thanks, everyone, and then if we can join, um, the other link at five forty-five, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Bye.